This meeting is being recorded. The recordings should be available by early next week, and that will be on the Cost Board's website. TBW may also be streaming this meeting live and archiving it for additional viewing opportunities. And now I will turn it over to Michelle to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Ross, and thank you all for being here today for this special public hearing for the Healthcare Cost Transparency Board. We're excited to have many people in person today. I think we'll do a quick overview of the agenda. Just briefly, we have a review of our legislative report, and we'll take a vote on that to finalize sending that over to the legislature. We have a presentation from our data team on the performance against the benchmark with the 2023 data. Then we'll transition into our public hearing with three different panels with our payer and industry panel, our consumer and labor panel, and a business panel. So we'll do that, and then we can, after we call roll, I'd like to have the mic back for just a moment, but I'll turn it over to you for roll call.
Thank you, Michelle. Now I'll call roll. When I say your name, please say here. Jane? Thank you, Jane. Eileen?
Here.
Thank you, Eileen. Lois?
Here.
Thank you, Lois. Bianca?
Here.
Thank you, Bianca. Ken?
Here.
Thank you, Ken. Jody?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Jody. Greg? Greg Marchand. Noting Greg as absent. Mark?
I'm here.
Thank you, Mark. Margaret? Margaret Stanley. Noting Margaret as absent. Ingrid? Thank you, Ingrid. And Kim Wallace.
Kim is online, we can't hear her.
Okay.
Oh, you can't hear me?
Oh, we can hear you, Kim. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we have sufficient members for a quorum, and I will hand it back to Michelle.
Thank you, Ross. I just wanted to take a moment, a personal privilege, and say thank you to Bianca. First of all, she has given us notice that this will be her last meeting as she leaves the Cost Board and our data advisory committee. So thank you so much for all of your time and engagement for many years with us, Bianca. We really appreciate it. And then I also wanted to have another moment of personal privilege and introduce our agency director. Ryan Moran is sitting next to me today. I don't know if he's on the camera very well, but Ryan is here joining us for a brief introduction. I'm very excited to say that Ryan has agreed to take over chairing the board in January. So he's just joining us for a few moments today to say hi and introduce himself to the board.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see everybody. Love seeing everybody in person that I've only seen on Zoom screens, too. So it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Michelle, for your leadership and supporting the Cost Board and the work that you've done as interim chair. I'm really thrilled to be here. I've hit almost the 100-day mark, which is really hard to believe. Isn't that crazy? Like, time goes by very fast. For those of you that I haven't been able to meet or don't know, I'm a new Washingtonian coming to the state. Most previously was Maryland's Deputy Secretary of Healthcare Financing and the state's Medicaid Director. And before that, spent some years in hospital operations and in community health center world and the delivery space. I think it's imperative for myself in terms of an orientation of what is obviously like a very critical time for healthcare in our state, particularly this concept of cost and affordability as well. So I've been out and about, traveling the state of Washington, spending time across agencies, being very deep into the organization, trying to get a real understanding of the needs and the voices of the perspectives that we have in the future. Obviously, our current national climate and debate centers around cost and affordability within the healthcare market ecosystem as well. And so I'm looking forward to sort of taking the reins, if you will, of chairship of this particular group under continued leadership and work with Michelle and Ross and our other team from HCA who support this work and know that in the future, that this realm, in order to be responsive to the needs of Washingtonians and cost affordability, will be important drivers of all of our work as we move forward together. So I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you so much for having me. I won't take too much of the agenda, which obviously is very packed, and I'll see you in 2026.
Thank you so much, Ross. Ryan and Ross.
Whoever you are.
One of these men with an R, sorry. No, I really am thrilled that you're really to take on the chairmanship in January. So we're looking forward to that. I think at this point, we need to shift swiftly into public comment because I know we have a number of people signed up for that. We're past our advertised time.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Ryan, as well, for joining us today. Folks could now turn to tab two in their meeting packets. We will do public comments. We have several individuals signed up today. If you are not signed up and you wish to give oral comment, you can raise your hand and you'll get an invitation to become a panelist. Please accept that. That's what allows you to unmute yourself and turn on your camera. Today, we'll also have a two-minute time limit for public comment due to the number of commenters. So you will see a timer on your screen, and please try to stay within the allotted time. And with that, I will turn it over to the Washington Hospital Association, who submitted a written comment in advance. If there is anyone, Katarina or any other members from WISHA that would like to speak to that written comment, which is also included in your packet.
Hi, thanks so much for the opportunity to comment. We would like to reserve this time for our members who have prepared comment and wanted to turn your attention to the more specifics on the report we've included within the meeting materials, but would like to save comment and time for our members who are speaking today. But thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kat, and thank you for submitting your comment as well. We also received a comment from the Washington State Hospital Association in advance, which is also in your packet, and wanted to see if there is anyone from WISMA here today that would like to speak to that comment.
Ross, we have some hands raised. I'm not sure if any of them are WISMA people. I don't know if there's someone specifically from WISMA.
I don't see them.
I am not able to see those, so I will huddle up with our assistant who's helping us with Zoom and check on those names. And perhaps we could move on to the next individual that signed up for comment. Jim Freiberg from the Patient Coalition of Washington.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Freiberg, speaking on behalf of the Patient Coalition of Washington. While I know you'll hear formally from consumers later on a panel about Washington state data, I appreciate this public comment opportunity so that you can hear from other stakeholders like the patient community that I represent. We are disappointed that the state is again failing to meet our healthcare spending benchmark. Patients see this every day when they pay their insurance premiums or get a bill from their doctor or hospital visit. I feel like the healthcare industry still refuses to acknowledge the severity of this crisis and their role in perpetuating it. I'm not alone in this sentiment. Earlier this week, the West Health Gallup Center on Healthcare released a new study that ranks American self-reported experiences with healthcare, meaning not just how our system performs on paper, but how people see it in their everyday life. The results back up what advocates have been saying. Our healthcare system is massively unaffordable and needs to change. Our state received a grade of D+ when it comes to cost, and 93% of Washingtonians surveyed said that our country is paying too much for the quality of the healthcare that we receive. People are stressed out because of the cost of healthcare. 51% of those surveyed said the cost of healthcare contributes a lot or some stress to their daily life. We all know that healthcare is massively complex, but we have to step up to meet the urgency and magnitude of this problem. Unfortunately, it will get worse as federal spending cuts come to fruition and people are kicked off their coverage. But that doesn't mean we can't continue to take action here at home. Please continue your good work, and I hope we can continue to lean in together to make some progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Really appreciate those comments. Next, we had Suzanne Daly from Multicare, who had indicated they would like to speak at today's meeting. Does it, do we have Suzanne? Not seeing Suzanne?
I don't see her among the attendees.
Okay. And I just spoke with our WISMA representative, and they're not going to be speaking specifically at the public comment period today. So I believe we have one additional hand that was raised.
Sarah.
Sarah, okay. And please go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have two minutes.
Hi, I assume you mean Dr. Sarah Heeling, if there's another Sarah, because that is a popular name. I apologize if I'm taking up space, but I did submit earlier today an email for the board to review, and so I don't want to take up too much time. If there's any questions, please reach out to me to that email. And it's just well-done with the investigations and that I'm advocating for rural spaces. And I see that you guys had some waivers for that, and I just want to acknowledge that it's very helpful, but there's still further work around data to do that I'm happy to help with if possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and apologies, Dr. Heeling. I really appreciate those comments. And the comment came in a little late, so we'll have to include that with our next meeting packet, but that will be included. So thank you for submitting that. And finally, and so next we'll have Scott O'Brien. Again, you have two minutes, and please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Great. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for the chance to be here. I'm Scott O'Brien. I serve as the Chief Executive for Providence in Eastern Washington and Montana. Wanted to join today just to provide some additional context from the benchmarking results that should be considered by the board as we look at the plan going forward. As healthcare providers and operators, we understand costs are rapidly increasing in our communities, the impact it has on our patients, employers, and the economy overall in our communities. We're constantly looking at ways to reduce costs while maintaining positive outcomes and access for communities across the state of Washington. One of the realities we're seeing is higher utilization of services by our communities, and we believe this is a driving factor, an increased number, not just of claims, but overall costs to the healthcare delivery system in the state. This could be attributed to more patients seeking care or patients seeking long overdue care, which often ends up being more costly. Utilization, from our perspective, must be understood as a key factor in cost growth, especially as our population ages and has increasing healthcare needs. In addition, many of our cost inputs, such as pharmacies, supplies, and labor expense, have seen significant inflation over the last few years, and we have limited ability to control those costs from a per-unit perspective. Amid recent state legislation and federal action, health systems are facing a financial sustainability cliff due to both declining reimbursement for government payers and commercial plans, including the Washington PEB and SEB enrollees providing decreased reimbursement for care going forward. Together, these trends force us to continue to evaluate what services we can reliably provide for communities across the state. Providence is committed to serving all members of our communities and doing what we can to help control costs. We're eager to be partners with all of you in this journey. At the same time, cost containment cannot be achieved solely on the backs of hospitals and health systems. Doing so will likely weaken the delivery system and access across the state and decrease the overall health of our state. Thank you very much for your time and your efforts on this work.
Thank you so much, Scott, for those comments. And next, we have Dominic. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Dominic Stahaly. I'm Analytics Manager for Virginia Mason, for instance, Canhelp. I've been in this role for 12 years, analyzing both fee-for-service and value-based contracts. I have two comments to make on the benchmark methodology and another comment to make on the cost of providing care. First, due to its year-over-year nature, the benchmark, as it's calculated now, would penalize an organization for lowering spend. For example, if an organization lowers spend by 5% in year one but has an increase back up to 4% in year two, they would fail to meet the benchmark in year two, even though over the two-year period, they would have decreased the spend by 1%. Per this benchmark, it is better to increase spend each year, as long as it's under the 3.2% goal. A proper benchmark should take into account trends across multiple years, and a number of our current agreements, including Medicare's MSSP agreement, do so already. Second, the need to account for patient acuity in this benchmark. Though as it currently stands, a healthcare system would be penalized for seeing patients with rising acuity or improving access to their system to disadvantaged populations. Both factors need to be taken into account when measuring healthcare spending. Again, a number of our current agreements, including Medicare's MSSP agreement, already do so. Lastly, there is no measure of the cost of providing the care. Investments by healthcare systems to improve access, especially to disadvantaged populations are ignored. For example, the opening of urgent care locations both improves access and lowers spend from the higher-cost emergency rooms and, long-term, lowers costs across the board. These investments should be taken into account to maintain access to high-quality care. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dominic, for that comment. And next, we have Adam. And just a quick note to Suzanne, we're going to try to patch you in after Adam's comment. So thank you for your patience. Please go ahead, Adam.
Great, thank you. My name is Adam Zarin. I'm the Director of State Governor Affairs for the Blood Cancer United, formerly the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Earlier this year, the state was a leader in the nation by passing legislation to protect the credit scores of patients with medical debt that can make a significant difference for some in getting a job, securing housing, or starting a business. However, as I'm sure many of you know, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau in DC has decided to implement a new rule that threatens to undermine that protection for families and allow medical debt to be reported again to credit agencies. And while the legality and implementation of that rule will play out in the courts, the timing couldn't be more devastating for patients. With the upheavals of Medicaid enrollment and the potential expiration of insurance subsidies at the end of the year, patients will face higher costs for treatment or a medical emergency if they seek care at all. And that means more families in Washington will be taking on medical debt. And the solution, as it was before the passage of HR-1 and the government shutdown, is to control the cost of care. Last month, we released a report titled "High Prices: Higher Stakes", which outlines a set of policy recommendations aimed at curtailing industry practices such as consolidation and anti-competitive behaviors that drive up prices and increase individual and systemic healthcare costs. These costs are then passed on to cancer patients and other consumers through higher premiums, deductibles, and coinsurance. Research on hospital mergers uniformly finds that mergers raise hospital prices for both for-profit and nonprofit hospitals. Post-merger hospital prices have been estimated to increase by as much as 54%. This is a contributor to why, by 2030, the annual cost of cancer care in the United States is projected to exceed $245 billion, nearly the double, nearly double the cost in 2010. So we encourage this board to continue to drive conversations on these topics, protect patients and their families from spiling costs that inevitably become medical debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that comment. And finally, we have Susan Daly, and I think, Audrey, you'll be able to press the allow to talk function and, oh, okay. And Suzanne, you can go up.
Hi, this is Suzanne.
Perfect.
Hi, this is Suzanne. I'm the Vice President of Payer Contracting for Multicare, which is a local nonprofit health system here in Washington. And I'm here to encourage the Healthcare Cost Transparency Board to rebase the benchmark and to index the benchmark to a healthcare-specific inflation measure. Rebasing is really important because, according to the St. Louis Fed, the National Hospital Producer Price Index exceeded 18% in 2022. That's what it costs hospitals across the nation, on average, to produce the services they provide. Washington healthcare providers' experience was similar. The post-pandemic inflation impacted U.S. healthcare in a particularly unique way, and we believe the benchmark needs to reflect that. The current cost trend is indexed to general inflation, which doesn't account for the economic factors specific to the healthcare industry. And the healthcare industry doesn't behave like groceries or other mass-market consumer products. Over 50% of most hospitals' costs, including ours, are the salaries, wages, and benefits of the nurses, doctors, technicians, and other professionals we employ. We're particularly focused on and exposed to high-cost pharmaceuticals and new medical technologies. So despite having fuller beds and higher labor costs, we really strive to ensure that we're operating as efficiently as possible. We understand that healthcare is too expensive, and nobody wants to pay more for it. We really strive to manage productivity, to flex our labor to match patient census, and we strive to manage length of stay and to get people into low-cost settings as quickly and safely as possible. But the realities are that healthcare cost trends are not running consistently with the benchmark trend that the Healthcare Cost Transparency Board has elected to use. So we encourage you to really rebase your index to something that reflects the reality of healthcare inflation in the U.S. and in Washington post-pandemic. Thank you for the work you're doing and appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you so much, Suzanne, and apologies for those technical difficulties. Not seeing any other hands, that will close the public comment period. And we will transition to tab three in your meeting packet, which is reviewing the Cost Board's legislative report. We had provided a draft of the report in the October 23 meeting packet and received some comments, which we included in the appendices of the report and updated the report in response to some of those comments. We wanted to provide a quick overview of the report for those who have not had a chance to review, as well as some of the updates, and then take any feedback that you have from Cost Board members. And I will hand it over to Jen to do a quick overview.
Thanks, Ross. The headline for this year's report is that, for the second year since Washington has been measuring, healthcare expenditures have grown faster than the cost-growth benchmark. This growth is faster than the average growth of wages in Washington state, faster than the growth in consumer prices. We will hear more about the numbers from Amanda in a few minutes later in the meeting. This year's report focuses on three main topics that are connected to the drivers of cost growth and were originally identified by the Cost Board in the 2024 year. Those topics are slowing spending growth, enhancing market oversight, and increasing primary care utilization. In 2025, foundational legislative action occurred in each of those three areas, and these actions are summarized in the report. These three areas remain among the Cost Board's top priorities looking forward to 2026, and several recommendations for the future are also included in the report. And with that, I will turn it over to Harrison Fontaine to describe some edits that have occurred since the last version was reviewed by the Cost Board.
So in response to the feedback review from the first review of the report, we've made some textual changes to clarify some things and to add some context. In the introduction, we simplified our explanation of the impact of the federal changes and modified our description of what the OIC rate changes mean for consumers to ensure accuracy. In the slowing spending growth section, we made changes to the text again to explain the different growth rates that are in figures six and seven of that section. The first figure refers to the overall growth. This is THCE or total healthcare expenditures. The second figure, this is Figure seven, refers to total medical expenditures. This is the largest component of THCE, and it's comprised of essentially the spending for medical expenses in the commercial Medicaid and Medicare markets. It does not include things like net cost of private health insurance and spending through state agencies. More detail on this will be provided in the next presentation. We also made minor edits to the brief description of market oversight and regulatory frameworks in other states and made a separate section for private equity to disambiguate the differences between that and consolidation in general. Lastly, due to some late-breaking input from our board member Bianca, we have also, we also will be making changes to the text to clarify when we are talking about hospital spending, whether we're talking about inpatient, outpatient spending, or the two together. And with that, I will turn it over to Ross.
Thank you, Jen and Harrison, for that overview and discussing what changes we've made. I should also note that after this discussion of the legislative report, we intend to take a vote, seeking the Cost Board's approval on the legislative report, to submit that to the legislature. So just want to give you that insight. And with that, I wanted to invite Cost Board members to provide any feedback or ask any questions that you have regarding the legislative report. Yeah, go ahead, Ingrid. Ah, sorry, the remote, or the microphone, apologies.
Okay, great, thanks. It's just a small technical thing, and I apologize. Maybe I'm looking at an earlier draft. But on page nine, it says, "Washington's Public Option: The Cascade Select Plan Will Increase Average Rates by 26%." So that's inaccurate, and it may have already been corrected. I apologize if that's the case.
I believe that. I believe that is the most recent version, so that is something that we will need to correct. And I assume we can reach out to your staff to make sure we get the correct number.
The terminology Cascade Care Select Plans, and then that data point shouldn't be associated with the select plans.
Okay.
That data point is related to something else.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So Ingrid, could you just send that in writing so we can get the appropriate notes?
Sure, yes.
And wanted to just provide a little bit more time in case any other Cost Board members have any feedback or additional questions related to the legislative report. And as Ingrid just identified, we are by no means perfect, so more than happy to get any feedback that you have. Ultimately, just wanted to make sure it's the best product possible.
I know we've had a number of comments and questions from board members. So thank you all for sharing your feedback on the draft that you have and that you've had for the last month. We appreciate that input. If there are additional questions, please let us know. Otherwise, I hope that we can move forward to finalize this with the exceptions noted today and prepare to send this off to the Governor's Office and the legislature so that they have it by our December 1 statutory deadline, if at all possible. I see Kim Wallace as a hand up. Kim?
Yeah, yes. I just wanted to appreciate the organization and the readability of the report. It's common, I think, sometimes to experience these types of reports as being an awful lot of work to get through. And so I found, I found the information to be, you know, very accessible. And so I wanted to just call that out. Thank you, thank you very much for what I'm sure was just a lot of effort and attention and care. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kim. That's great to hear. That was one of our goals, so I'm glad that it is a little bit easier to read, and that was our goal, was submitted to the legislature as well. So thank you. And not seeing any other hands, I will hand it back to Michelle to initiate the vote on the legislative report.
Thank you, Ross. Again, I would echo Kim's comments and thank the team for their hard work, summarizing the work of the board for the last year and the recommendations to the legislature. So again, thank you for all of your hard work to prepare this. With that, I'd like to shift into a vote for approval on the legislative report so we can submit that. As usual, we'll use a consensus methodology. And looking for nomination. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, legislative report is approved, and we will submit to the legislature for their review. Thank you all. All right, I think our next presentation is from our data and analytics team. I don't think that's Amanda's title. Let me get Amanda's title. Analytics and Research Deputy for the Healthcare Authority, Amanda Avalos. And I see she's online today, so Amanda, we'll turn it over to you to introduce this year-long effort to manage measurement of the benchmark performance.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you for having me today. I'm Amanda Avalos, Deputy for Enterprise Analytics at the Healthcare Authority. Before I get started, I want to say that I acknowledge that this work underneath this, the data collection and analysis was performed by our data team here at the Healthcare Authority, and I'm presenting today on their behalf. We'll be looking at findings from the 2025 data call and healthcare cost growth trends in Washington. So, next slide. All right. So we're going to be talking about, first, the general background for this. All right, so we're going to be talking about, first, the general background for this analysis, and then we'll move into some of the key findings and highlights. The data is focused on 2023 spending, so we'll look at overall spending as well as per-member spending, cost growth versus the benchmark. And we'll look at that in a variety of different ways, and then we'll close out with key takeaways. Next slide. All right, so many of you board members are aware that there are multiple different analytic initiatives associated with the Cost Board. This presentation is going to focus only on one of them. This is our high-level performance against the benchmark report, which is the assessment of cost growth against that benchmark target that has been set. Also, one item to note, as I'm presenting, if there are questions, I am fine with interruptions. I can't see the chat, but if someone wants to come off mute and ask questions, I'm happy to answer as we go through the slides. And next slide. All right, so this lays the groundwork. There's a lot going on here, but, but we're looking at the total healthcare expenditures, the THCE, and that is broken down into three major components. The first is the total medical expense, which is our claims and non-claims information that's been collected, as well as the NCPI, which is the, the net cost of private health insurance. So this is the administrative overhead of the insurer, paying bills, advertising, and sales commission. And then we also have other spending, and this is data that comes from Veterans Affairs, Department of Corrections, Labor and Industries. As we're looking at this data, to call out the data sources, they are collected specifically for the purpose of this analysis. Commercial and non-fee-for-service comes from carriers in Washington. The fee-for-service data comes from Washington Healthcare Authority, as well as from CMS reporting. And next slide, please. All right, so this is the second year that the healthcare cost growth benchmark has been applied. The first time was back in 2022. The benchmark value for this year is 3.2%. And that means that the goal is intended to stay below this benchmark for the annual healthcare cost growth. It is the key measure of affordability that's been identified from this board, and this is a report that comes out once a year for us to look back at 2023 data for this call. Next slide, please. All right, so we're going to be looking at a variety of aggregation levels for the performance measures. So we'll start with statewide and by market. And here, we're going to be looking at the total healthcare expenditures per member per year growth rate. And then when we drill down a little bit to look at the carriers and the large provider organizations' performance, that will be a confidence interval of age-sex-adjusted truncated total medical expense per member per year growth rate. And as you can imagine, there's a tremendous amount of detail underneath all of these analytics. And I'm going to call out, probably not for the first time, the appendix that's attached to these slides, which has a tremendous amount of information that explains methodology and multiple other things. There's actually, on Slide 56, you can find specific information about the methods. And next slide, please. All right, so one thing to appreciate about the data team here is that there has been improvements every year as they're refining the data call, data collection, and validation and analysis. So there's a couple of things to highlight for the 2025 data call. The first is the primary care spending. The definition is now in alignment with the Advisory Committee on Primary Care's definition. This is a definition that was newly created, and now the data call is aligned with this definition. It requires specific place-of-service codes, in addition to provider taxonomy and procedure codes. Another change for this last data call is improvements on the accuracy and completeness of the submissions. And this has been happening in conjunction with feedback from the data submitters and the validation process. So it's been refined and continues to be refined. We could find more details on that in the appendix. Right, and next slide, please. All right, so moving into some of the exciting parts, the highlights from the Cost Board's data call. And the key finding, which you had hints of earlier in today's conversation, is that Washington's growth in healthcare spending per member per year was at 6.2% for 2023, which is well above the 3.2 benchmark. The bar charts here show some other aspects of cost growth between 2022 and 2023 to add some context to that increase that we're seeing in healthcare spending in Washington. Next slide, please. Right, so moving into other major highlights, the, the growth spending per member per year of 6.2% is the second highest growth rate since the Cost Board began collecting data. We saw that all markets exceeded the benchmark. The growth rates for the commercial and Medicare markets were the second highest since data had been collected, and this is only exceeded by the growth in 2021 after some of the pandemic-related disruptions occurred. The table that you can see here highlights the variation between the markets. So the Medicaid, large provider organizations are less likely to exceed the benchmark at 41%. But we'll dive into some of that detail in a little bit. Next slide, please. Right, and large contributions to growth in 2023 were distributed around multiple service categories. All markets had substantial contributions to growth from prescription drug spending. In the commercial market, we'll see how hospital outpatient spending as a leading contributor. And prescription drug spending was a leading contributor to growth in the Medicare market. When we look into the Medicaid growth, we'll see that prescription drug and professional other spending was a top contributor. And on a per-member-per-year basis, the total healthcare expenditures have increased 29.4% between 2017 and 2023, 2017 being the first year of Cost Board data collection. Next slide, please. All right, so now we're going to be moving into looking at total healthcare expenditures. Again, you saw on the previous slide that this is a majority, where we're looking at the carriers, as well as labor and industries, corrections, veteran affairs, and the net cost of private insurance. So really that larger picture of what's happening here in Washington State. Next slide, please. All right, so this is total healthcare expenditures. You can see the dark blue bar chart is showing the year-over-year growth rate, and the lighter blue bar chart shows the per-person-per-year expenditure growth. And you can see that Washington reached $56.9 billion in 2023 in total healthcare expenditures. And this represents a 6.6 increase over 2022. And then when you're looking at a per-person-per-year basis, yearly spending surpassed $8,000, which is a 6.2 increase over 2022. Next slide, please. So here, we're stepping back a little and looking at the total healthcare expenditure growth per member for multiple years, going back to 2017, when data collection began. You can see that the benchmark was only being applied for the last two years. You can also see that the growth rate of per-person THCE in 2023 was the highest since 2017. Next slide, please. All right, so this is a different way of looking at it. Here, we're able to look at the THCE spending breakdown, and you're able to see from those first three, Medicaid, Medicare, and Commercial, which is the total medical expense section, you can see that this is really the majority. When you're looking at an average dollar of 2023 expenditures, the majority comes from the Medicaid, Medicare, and commercial spending here. NCPI, VA, LNI, DOC is really only 10 cents on the dollar when you look at it this way. And next slide, thank you. All right, so there's, there's a lot to see on this, this slide. This gives you, on the left side, you're able to see all the different markets, as well as NCPI and agency-submitted data, and then the year-over-year change in total healthcare expenditure. As well as, when you look right in that middle, you're able to see what is the proportion for each of these in the 2023 spending. And then that third visualization is the growth rate. So you're able to see between the 2022 and 2023 growth rate for each of these. The strongest growth rate for total medical expense, again, is in that commercial and Medicare market. And you can see that the non-TMHC, so the VA, NCPI, LNI, and DOC had more modest growth. And in the case of the NCPI, actually had a growth decrease during this period. And next slide, please. So this is a nice way for us to zoom out a little bit, and instead of focusing just on Washington, see where Washington lines up when compared to other states that have similar benchmarking processes and data collection. So this is the 2023 per-member-per-year growth by market for these other states. And Washington is in green here, so you can see that, generally speaking, for each of these markets, Washington is roughly in the middle of the rest of the other states that have data to share. And next slide, please. All right, so now we're going to be moving in, kind of honing in on total medical expense. So this is claims and non-claims spending in the commercial Medicare and Medicaid market. Right, so here we have per-person spending growth. That visualization on the top is showing each market and seeing the, the spending growth between 2022 and 2023. The visualization on the bottom is when we're looking at per-person, and, and that is where we apply the benchmark, only when we're looking at the growth per person. And you can see that for each market, you can note that Medicaid market had an increase of 5.2% is less than what we're seeing within the other markets. And we'll note here that it is really important to be able to look at it by person because of the population changes, changes in size of that population. For example, here, we had a slight decrease in the Medicaid-covered population. So looking at it, when we see the spending growth per person, gives us a little bit more value and understanding of the text. Next slide, please. All right, so we're going to start moving into service category and seeing the, the service category drivers to cost growth. So a quick reminder, and also I'll, I'll call out again to the appendix, if you would like to see explanation for what each of the service categories contains, you can find that in the appendix. But I will identify that professional services includes primary care claims, professional specialty. I also want to note, because of the way we receive CMS reporting on Medicare fee-for-service, there's some limitations to how we have Medicare for, fee-for-service information stratified. So in some cases, you may see only Medicare Advantage information due to that reporting. And next slide, please. All right, so here, we're looking, it's a similar visualization we saw earlier. So just the, at a given dollar, how much of it, what proportion goes to different components here in service categories. We can see that hospital and professional services accounted for almost 2/3 of the total medical expense in 2023. Next slide, please. All right, and here, we're able to look at total medical expense by market and service category. So what you can see in green is the Medicare, the purple is commercial, and the blue is Medicaid. And so the spending you can see in each market is divided up a variety of different categories. Again, that appendix will tell you the details of what's there, but it also gives you, because of the size of each of those blocks, gives you some indication of where the drivers are for the total spending in things like hospital outpatient, hospital inpatient, and others. Next slide, please. All right, so here we have total medical expense by service category. So on that left side, you're able to see the different service categories and the growth of total medical expense per member per year during 2022 and 23. In the middle, you're able to see that proportion of overall, and then the growth rates are represented on those bubbles, showing the, the growth for each of the different service categories. We saw high per-member spending across multiple categories, professional, hospital outpatient, and prescription drugs combined, added $367 to the per-person total medical expense. I do want to call out also here, you can see the long-term care in yellow at the bottom, going back again to that appendix. One thing to note is that long-term care data does have some limitations this year. We're hoping to be able to have more comprehensive submissions, but right now there are some long-term care services, particularly those paid for by DSHS that may not be included in this year. So this may be an area where we'll see increases in future years as that data is collected. All right, and next slide, please. So here, we're looking at contribution to growth by category for 2022 and 2023 by market. So you're able to look, that first bar chart shows us statewide, and then commercial, Medicare, and Medicaid. We're able to see that the commercial market was led by outpatient spending. Medicaid growth was led by professional other category. And Medicare spending showed several areas, categories, that had high growth. And prescription drug continues to pop up in multiple markets as a driver. And so here is another opportunity for us to see how Washington State compares to other states. And similar to what we saw in the, the previous slide that compared us to other benchmark states, the total medical expense per member per year growth rate by service category shows us that we are pretty similar to what other states are seeing, again, close to the median in most of these different categories. So again, Washington is in green, so you can see how we align and compare with the other five benchmark states. All right, so I, I love this visualization, but it has a lot going on. So we will get a chance to drill down into each of these, but what, what we're seeing here now is the service category contributions to cost growth for all markets and statewide, per member per year. And, and one thing I think I would really like to, to point out here, so that the X-axis shows us the 2023 per-member-per-year spend. And if you look at the Medicaid side, you can see that it's really shifted to the other, the, the left side because of much lower spend when you're comparing to other markets, particularly Medicare. And so let's go on to that next slide, and we'll drill into the statewide view of top contributors to total medical expense growth. So to explain this, this slide a little bit, the Y-axis is showing us the per-member-per-year growth rates. And the X-axis is the 2023 spending per member per year. And then that size of each of the bubbles, the service category bubbles, that indicates the contribution to the overall market growth rate. And so what we're seeing here statewide is that there was growth in professional services and hospital outpatient, and then prescription drugs as well. Next slide, please. All right, so we're going to be looking at the same type of visualization, but for different markets. And now we're looking at the commercial market. And here, what we're seeing is that the top contributors include hospital outpatient, prescription drugs, and then hospital inpatient, which we'll call out as hospital inpatient wasn't something we were seeing in the other markets. So this one is unique to commercial markets. And now we're looking at Medicare and the top contributors by service category for Medicare. And we're seeing the contributors being prescription drugs, professional services, hospital outpatient, also non-claims, which is primary capitated and bundled payments, and then the claims other as well. So it's pretty distributed evenly over, of these different service categories, so nothing standing out tremendously. Next slide, please. All right, so now we're looking specifically at the Medicaid market and the top contributors to total medical expense growth. Again, what we're seeing is prescription drugs coming up, as well as professional other claims as top contributors to growth between 2022 and 2023. All right, so now we're going to move on and focus on primary care expenditures. And there's some new and interesting things happening here. So next slide, let's jump in. So we talked a little bit about this in the intro, but I want to make sure that this is highlighted, that we have a new standard definition of primary care spending. We are using it for the first time, applying it for the first time in this data call. We'll have two years of data that we'll be looking at where it's been applied. It is one that we're hoping enhances the accuracy and accountability and supports these initiatives where we're trying to focus on improving primary care utilization in the state. Next slide please. A couple of things to note, what the differences are with this definition. One key difference is that the location is part of that definition, the where it is taking place plays a role in the definition. So it is honing in, so it's narrowed a little bit from the previous definition. Another thing to call out is this was a definition specifically for claims spending. So non claims primary care is not currently captured. But we are hopeful that we'll be able to have this as part of next year's data call. So as we're looking at the definition, and again, the appendix has a lot of great links if you want to find a lot more detail around how this was defined, but it is the services and the providers and the locations working together to give us primary care identified services and spending. Next slide please. All right, so here is the revised primary care definition in play. Let me explain how to view this. So we have primary care by market, per member per year spending, and then we also have proportionate of total medical expense. When you see that solid line, that is the old definition and the dashed line is the new definition. So you'll see that new definition being applied in 2022 and 2023. You're identifying Medicare Advantage in green. Remember I mentioned some of the limitations of Medicare fee for service data reporting that we have available from CMS. So this is one of those cases where we can't show Medicare fee for service, and this is Medicare Advantage, specifically in the green line. The blue line is Medicaid and purple is commercial. So the headline here is unfortunately, we are not close to meeting our target of 12% that the legislature has set for primary care spending. It ranges depending on the market between 2.3% for Medicare Advantage to 4.3% for Medicaid. So there's some work to be done here potentially. But I will also note again that we don't have non claim spending here. So in future years when that comes, you know, that may adjust what we're seeing in terms of of primary care spending because that would then be included or it is not currently. Next slide please. All right, so now we're going to move into the performance against the benchmark. Large provider entities and carriers. Just a reminder that, you know, those large provider entities are organizations that serve around 10,000 or so members. And we can move forward to the next slide please. All right, so here is a plot where you can see each dot representing a individual carrier or large provider entity. That red line is the 2023 benchmark of 3.2%. The carriers are in blue on the left side and the large provider entities have that kind of green overlay on the right. And this is the estimated per member per year growth rate. What we saw is there was a wide distribution of estimated growth rates across large provider organizations and carriers. And overall, the growth rates were high relative to the benchmark. I'm going to call out to the appendix one more time. Slides 43 through 48 have a much more detailed analysis on the carrier and the large provider entity performance. There's also an inclusion of provider cost growth by market, which I think really helps illuminate the inherent differences between the commercial and the Medicare and the Medicaid market. So that's something I'd call out is something to look at. Next slide please. All right, so now we're moving into the key takeaways. The 2023 statewide growth in spending per member per year again was 6.2%, well above the 3.2% benchmark, the second highest growth rate since we began collecting data for the cost board. And all markets exceeded the benchmark and the growth was widespread across carriers and providers. The updated primary care definition, it really narrowed that definition. And it did lead into a small decrease measured of primary care spending. And we tend to note that primary care remains a small part of the total medical expense overall. Next slide. Another takeaway, large contributions to growth in 2023 were distributed across multiple service categories. We found on a per member per year basis, total healthcare expenditures have increased 29.4% between 2017 and 2023. But per member total healthcare expenditures for 2023 were just over $8,000. And this represents 28% of the median annual income per person for a four person household. And for questions, I'm not sure how we're doing on time. There may be some time allotted still now, but for detailed questions or questions related to the appendix or other things that you would like to know, these are the contact information. You can definitely reach out as well as ask questions now, assuming we have time available.
Thank you so much, Amanda, for that excellent presentation. Okay, now that should not hopefully be echoing. But wanted, we have about 10 minutes for any question from cost board members related to the data call results that Amanda presented. So just wanted to see if anyone had any additional comments or questions.
Just in terms of an update, right? The, this is awesome data. Thank you so much to the team and also to the carriers that supplied the data and the other data sources. So this shows total expenditures. Will the cost driver analysis that we're waiting for from On Point have more data about what the drivers are as between utilization and price on these total expenditures?
I am going to defer to Amanda on that because she has more of the technical understanding between price and intensity and some of the complications that come from the database that On Point draws from. So Amanda, are you able to respond to that?
Sure, again, so at a high level, this, the report that was shared now and the data that is collected from the carriers is aggregated and it is meant to be that high level overview of what's happening in the state. So you were correct that the drill down to look at price intensity, utilization, and some of the cost drivers would be more appropriate for any of the On Point All Pair Claims Database supplied analysis or other analysis that the board is requesting. So it probably wouldn't come from this type of analysis. It would likely use other data sources.
Yes, I believe right now we're expecting it approximately in March. Does that sound right, Amanda?
That sounds close, but I would have to go back and double check that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, did that answer your question, Jane? And we can follow up with more information about that. Okay.
Just a heads up, we can't hear unfortunately.
I know, I'm sorry. No, it's good to know that data is coming because that's a really important piece of the puzzle.
Exactly. Thank you, Jane, for calling that out. I think bring your attention back to Amanda's early slide with the color grant which deliverable we have in front of us today. The performance against benchmark is just one piece of the data that the cost board does examine. It is a very important part that just tells us that around that growth. And then as Jane has called out, the more granular analysis of the claims data and that experience on where people are actually seeking care will come out of that All Pair Claims Database and the analysis that we have underway right now with our On Point vendor. I see that Kim has a hand up.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm wondering what we know or what we anticipate knowing regarding the relationship between the capacity constraints in primary care, you know, primary care providers from a health resource standpoint. You know, the relationship between the resource, resources available and the disappointing, you know, sort of spend when it comes to primary care spending. If, you know, I'm imagining that if every primary care provider available in Washington was full up, you know, and was providing services, had full schedules. And, you know, folks were taking, seeking out primary care as much as possible for, in all appropriate cases, you know, how far, how much better would we be? Or would there be just an inherent constraint that really is about health profession's resource, you know, capacity?
Kim, I think that's an excellent point that, you know, we are looking at the primary care spending, but you're right, there's that underpinning of access to primary care, which is a different and really important question to ask. So absolutely agree that that's a piece of the puzzle.
Thank you, Kim. I'd also note that there are multiple ways we're measuring primary care. None of that right now with the four different methods. We have several NHCA with a value based purchasing methodology, the data call methodology, All Pair Claims Database methodology, the new OIC data gathering that is going to begin and we are going to figure out what is the right way to gather that data and not duplicate it in multiple ways as we go forward. But none of that really speaks to gathering access to networks and what the capacity is. It's more about the spend so far. And I don't know, Jane, if you have a component at OIC, you would want to comment on the network adequacy. I don't, it's a slightly different measure.
Yeah, I mean, the, what we're looking at is spend data.
I see that Ingrid also has her hand up.
Rachel and real hand her up. Is my microphone on is the question? Oh, excellent. Okay. Just curious, just a technical question. And Amanda, I keep thinking you're sitting across the room, but you're not. You're there virtually high. Really good presentation. I appreciate it. I'm curious about the carriers and providers who are meeting the benchmark. So in the highlights on page nine, you know, you have 82% of commercial. Well, I won't read all the numbers, but you have that table there you might, you could turn to if you could. Showing that we have a lot of our carriers and providers, significant number who are meeting the benchmark and having lower cost growth. And, you know, I got obvious question is like, what can we learn from that? What can we learn from them? And then, but I'm now, then you got me interested in the appendix since you kept plugging it so many times. So I dug through this huge pile of paper over here. And on page 44 and 45, there's more detail on, I looked at just carrier performance. But it doesn't seem to sync with the picture of how many are meeting the benchmark. When I look at the little dots, there's very few across the markets who are meeting the benchmark. So I'm just confused and just wanted to hear more from you.
Yeah, great, great question, Ingrid. And I don't know if we can go to that slide with that table in the highlight section. The table is actually different when we're looking at a statewide view versus, I keep going, I think one more slide. Yep, there we go. Ingrid, this is the table you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. So this is broken down by market. Whereas when we generally are assessing performance against the benchmark, we look at a statewide view. So at a statewide view, very few were below that benchmark. But when we look at the markets, that's where we can see, you know, particularly in the Medicaid market that within their Medicaid, you know, population, their Medicaid spend, they were meeting it. So yeah, to clarify that. So when we're talking statewide, when you're looking at the entire population being served by that large provider organization, they may not have met the benchmark, but within their Medicaid population, perhaps they did.
I do the follow up.
Okay, Amanda, I'm not a data person, I'm a lawyer. But under the carrier performance in the appendix, when, and I think Ingrid and I are both sort of scratching our heads when we're looking at the dots, commercial, Medicare, Medicaid, it looks, at least for the carriers, very many, if any, appear to be at the benchmark. So can you help us understand that?
Sure. And what slide in the appendix, just so we can all look at that together?
Oh, God.
Forty-five for Medicaid and forty-four for all markets.
Okay, oh yeah, there it is. Didn't show it on my laptop.
Slide through. But again, I do think this is the difference of when we are looking at the statewide view of a large provider organization and if they were able to, here we go, perfect. Okay, so for each of these, it's very specific to the carrier performance within their Medicaid. Or excuse me, in this case, it's Medicare to the left, Medicaid to the right. And so it's, it is a different view. And I think this is an important one to see because we do see variation when we're looking at it by market. But the general way that we're applying that benchmark is at the statewide, both, you know, commercial Medicare and Medicaid, you know, the total medical expense. That's how generally we are looking at the performance against the benchmark. But we knew that there is more to the story and so the team did want to, you know, stratify and pull out performance specific for these carriers, depending on, you know, Medicare spending, Medicaid spending, commercial spending. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah, a little bit. So can I ask a follow up? Tell me if I'm taking up too much.
Just, can we pause for a second? I see that our chief data officer, Shadri, has stepped up to the microphone and I think he's going to add to that answer.
You're good.
Am I good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This may be a simpler answer than that. The total number of carriers are 13. So when we say 82% of the carriers are on one side and 12% are on the other side, that means one carrier is on the other side. And you see that here.
Okay.
So when you don't see that many dots, that's true, because there aren't total that many dots.
Because there's lives, because that's, right?
Yes. So, and that's where it's, yes, the devil's in the details and.
Because Molina has like a million Medicaid lives.
Yes.
So it just, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Centene with a large number in the commercial space.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. That's super helpful. So just one other question and maybe, I mean, and this is just, Michelle, a broader thing is when you look at the Medicaid MCOs are operating on a fixed, right, monthly cap payment. And when we see this much variation in terms of growth and spending, does that end up translating into the next year's cap payment calculation? Is that, am I totally off base?
I'm going to get out of my lane because I'm not a finance person with our rates team. But their experience in utilization does of course factor into their rate setting and that review with our actuarial team.
Okay, thanks.
And they can correct me later. Eileen, I see your hand is up as well.
And I'm looking at the same things that Jane and Ingrid are. So on the providers, I, you know, I see what providers that were below or basically right on the line. And so this is kind of going to, what are we going to do with this data? Is there a plan to do a press release to say these were, you know, like to actually point out that we had some people that did do well? I think that was kind of the intentions when the bill was passed. So I just, have we had any of those discussions, I guess is where I'm at.
That's a great question, Eileen. There's a couple of different ways that we circulate this information. It's included in the legislative report, which is submitted to the legislature. The, our data team is also working on a benchmark report, which contains this information in a little bit more detail. And so that is also circulated to folks in the legislature. And then we are working on some shorter products, more like one pages or email blasts that calls out some of this information in more discreet terms without adding as much detail as you see in this presentation. So those are a few of the ways that we've contemplated circulating this information. But if you have any additional recommendations or other cost board members, would love to hear that. But would, if you have any additional recommendations or other cost board members, would, would love to hear that.
I'm just going to be watching the clock here and suggest that we move into some additional feedback on this report. But we had identified, um, Ingrid and Jane with a few minutes on their particular agency experience or, or program experiences, maybe the case, around cost growth. So I wanted to make sure we offer that opportunity to both of you. I don't know which one of you wants to go first, Ingrid. Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, greetings everyone who can hear me now. Amanda, I just want to thank you again first. That was, uh, really helpful. And Ross and Michelle, and also very excited about your new director, Director Moran, taking up the gavel for this, for this board. So thank you. So again, I'm Ingrid Ulrey, CEO of the Health, uh, Washington Health Benefit Exchange. Addressing healthcare cost inflation is really fundamental to the exchange and to our mission of radically improving the way Washingtonians secure health coverage. So much so that our, our bipartisan board just consistently and frequently urges us to address these deeper issues that are behind the high prices that our customers face. And they are pleased that here at the staff level, we're able to represent the exchange out on this board. And I also want to call out and appreciate, uh, Leah Holm Marshall, Chief Strategist, um, at the exchange, um, and policy leader there, for her expertise and support for the work here, and Laura Kate Seitzkin on her team as well. So I think from what we're hearing, I just want to point out that the reality is that the faster costs are growing, the harder it is for people in our market and across all markets to afford the coverage that they need. And in past year, in the past handful of years in our market and the exchange market, rates have increased, um, double digits, around 10% year over year, the last handful of years, as I said. And on top of this, uh, we're seeing, uh, the impacts of the federal policy changes, such as the ACA tax credit. You may have heard about that in the news recently. It's been kind of a big deal. But it's important that, uh, you know, we're, we're very focused on all the federal change. But behind that is this baseline increase year over year, um, due to healthcare cost inflation that's really, really hard in the individual market, uh, where we may be, it's a smaller part of the commercial market, but an important part because we're really covering people who otherwise, before the ACA, just simply fell through the cracks, many of them. So, uh, this is the opposite direction, obviously, that we want to be going in, that we're currently going in. And I think it's part of, uh, part of the role of this board is to right the ship, if you will. And it's hard work and it, it is slow going. And, uh, it's up to, to us to see, find ways to make it speedier. An important role and duty of this board is to set this costs, cost growth target and track and evaluate our progress, uh, towards that goal. As has already been stated and shown in detail by you, Amanda, in terms of our progress to date, it's not looking good. So the difference between 6.2 and 3.2 is great. And from a more of a, from the person perspective, yearly spending per person surpassing $8,000 per year, and that's back in '23, is simply too much. I think it's important, and it was pointed out in one of your slides, that that's higher than wage growth and inflation. So there's this challenge that people have that they just can't keep up. And in our market with, um, this underlying problem of healthcare cost inflation, plus all these federal changes, we are seriously worried about the reduction in our overall market of a third to half of people purchasing on, on the exchange. I, I talked about the bright side already a little bit, just wanting to acknowledge that we do want to make sure we're learning from providers or carriers who are meeting the mark. And what are they doing? And what can we learn from them? And there's quite a bit of variation. We've done a lot of sort of slicing and dicing of the data, um, and that's important. And I also want to point out that in addition to analyzing and studying, uh, cost drivers and trends and, and such, we also need to be really vigilantly, vigilantly, solutions-oriented. So the board has a role to play in a number of ways that I just want to call out, some we've already talked about. One is encouraging our large purchasers, uh, large employers and others to use their purchasing power to create downward pressure on costs. So to sort of learn the lessons that we're finding in this data of, of what works. And then probably even bigger is at the systems level. And that's what the legislative report was about that we just reviewed, is ensuring that we're giving clear direction, uh, to our state legislative authorizing environment on what, what are the promising policies that are possible, uh, that we could use to slow spending growth, increase utilization of primary care, or, you know, rebalance there and how we spend, and address, uh, the role, um, the impacts of mergers acquisitions and the role of private equity. So the, the report to the legislature, I think, is very clear this year. I, I really feel like it's, it's a, a good, strong statement. And we're going to have a short session. It's going to be, there won't be a, a lot that they can achieve, but we need to make it very clear what are the tested policies that are working across the nation. And, and ultimately, in addition to these more action, solutions-oriented steps for the board, um, I want to point out the obvious that, um, as we've learned from other states like Massachusetts and Oregon, it's setting a benchmark is one thing and tracking how we're doing against it. But without really any authority to truly hold entities accountable for reaching the benchmark, the impact will be limited. So that's just something for us to think about and continue to grapple with and talk to policymakers as we revisit that question in the coming, um, weeks and months and years. For today, however, I just want to acknowledge that just the creation of this entity is an important step forward and an important start. And I, I am really looking forward to hearing the perspective from our panels. So, thank you. And for deeper analysis.
So, um, again, thanks so much to Amanda and Vishal and the team for doing great work on this information. And everything that we've seen on this translates to affordability for families, for employers who are trying to do the right thing and provide coverage for their employees. And for federal, state, and local governments, given the fiscal environment that we're going into in January. And unfortunately, more recent reports that we found don't really show a big change. So for example, the CMS National Health Expenditure Report came out in June of this year. 2024 projected there was a, about an 8.2% growth. 2025, they're predicting 7%. 26 and 27, they're predicting a slowdown to 5.6%, but part of that is because of fewer people being covered. And that is not the reason that we want healthcare expenditures to slow down. And then KFF does their annual employer health benefits survey. And there they found about a 5% increase in premiums from '24 to '25 and a 6% for family premiums from '24 to '25. And if you, any of you have heard Commissioner Kudurr, she will say that as she has gone around the state for the past year, the issue that comes up over and over and over again is healthcare and specifically affordability. So what is this spending growth? As I sort of needled Ross and Michelle about, it's a combination of three factors. It's how many people are covered. It's the use and the intensity of services that are used, and it's the price that's paid for the service. And in the individual and small group health plan filings that came into the Office of the Insurance Commissioner, it was clearly use and intensity of services, i.e. increasing, and price, i.e. increasing, that drove the biggest part of the rate increases that we saw. And while I'm super anxious to hear about the on-point cost driver analysis that's going to be coming up, the one that was done between 2017 and 2023 showed that the 30% increase in spending was driven by a 21% increase in price and a 7% increase in utilization per 1,000 members. And just like we've seen today, the drivers are retail pharmacy and hospital services. And then I always have to note, contrast that with behavioral health, where the driver was massively utilization and not as much price. Again, showing some of the disparities that I know my agency has been trying to tackle through our behavioral health parity work. And so in terms of next steps, I think what I would say is as we confront major fiscal challenges and we try to preserve the safety net that's there for folks, crisis creates opportunity. So there are opportunities to think outside the box. There are opportunities to think about how do we get the greatest value for every dollar that we spend on healthcare, especially for the most vulnerable people in our state. So at times like this, as I have been telling Emily and a bunch of other people, there is no bad idea to put on the table. And other focus, um, clearly access to primary care. The literature is out there. We all know it. Better access to primary care saves costs later on. Finding opportunities to reduce the complexity in our system, right? 15 health insurers, 15 different processes for prior authorization, and for a whole variety of other functions. We have been trying where we can, when we work with the legislature, when we work with healthcare authority and Health Benefit Exchange, to think about where we have opportunities to have common policies across all of those markets. And then, um, I can't, I can't conclude without talking about consolidation, vertical and horizontal consolidation. All the literature basically says that that causes price to increase. And so like as Ingrid said, focusing on merger and acquisition activity and private equity investment, our office is going to be putting out a sort of an issue brief later this year or early next year around private equity investment activity in Washington State. And we will be working very closely with Senator Robinson on her corporate practice of medicine bill. And I have to say, as the commissioner always says, I support universal coverage and I'm open to a discussion about how we get there, but we must get there without sacrificing affordability. Thanks.
Thank you both, Jane and Ingrid. I'm just noting your mics are hot in case you want to watch that. Thank you both for your comments and sharing the experiences you see in your organizations and your markets and calling out the, um, story is around price and utilization. And we'll, we'll continue that discussion clearly in 2026 as well as, uh, highlighting the market oversight responsibilities that we really believe are central to influencing some of this growth. So I, I think we've clearly put that in our legislative report. We've put that on the agenda for 2026 for a number of the board discussions and we'll continue to lean into those. And I do want to, um, underscore one of the components that Amanda mentioned in the, uh, documentation of the benchmark methodology. Just, it is purposefully aligned around that calculation of median wage growth and, uh, gross state domestic product. So that it does reflect the experience that's more relative to the consumer experience with these price impacts. I know I heard testimony earlier from our industry partners, and they're probably coming up to say this in the next panel, that they want it to be healthcare-specific. But the point is to measure the impacts on consumers and to figure out how we influence affordability for all of us as consumers and not to continue to build an extra bloat for our industry. And I'm sorry about that word, but, um, so there are methods that we need to continue working on to ensure that we are protecting all residents and their access to healthcare. And affordability is certainly a key focus for us going forward. So with that, I want to think, again, thank Amanda, Vishal, and the whole data team that is here today for their work to get us this report and to continue to, uh, monitor our experience across this whole state. So thank you for that. I think we're ready to take a five-minute break. We will return and invite our panels to come up and, um, have some great testimony this afternoon. So thank you very much. We'll be back at what time?
Uh, 3:33, please.
All right, folks, it is three thirty-three. If folks could return and we will get started here in just a moment.
Alrighty, thank you all for returning to the board meeting. We'll continue with our next panel. And I am probably needing to introduce you, so let me get my notes. So our panel is the Parent Industry Panel in front of us. Marissa Ingles, Director of Government Affairs and Policy with the Association of Washington Healthcare Plans. And Mark Mantai, Chief Executive Officer for Vancouver Clinic. So I'll turn it over to both of you.
And apologies, one additional presenter, Matt Lund, who's participating remotely from UW Medicine. So thank you, Matt. Yes, and we'll start with Marissa. In the structure, we were planning roughly five minutes for individuals to kind of give their high notes. And then we would ask some discussion questions to the panel. So starting with Marissa, please go ahead.
All right, and I do have some slides if that can be pulled up. But I will go ahead and say, yes, perfect. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me today. Marissa Ingles, new position with the Association of Washington Health Plans, but very happy to be here today. Let's go to the next slide. So just a brief overview. Again, prepared just a few minutes of remarks for you. So we'll talk about a couple of things. Next slide. So for anyone who's not familiar with the association, our member plans provide coverage in one form or another to over five million people in the state. So that crosses all of the state regulated, as well as other non-state regulated federally regulated insurance coverage areas. And all right, challenges ahead. I think everyone in this room and online is very well aware that we have some headwinds, to say the least, in healthcare world. Certainly, all the federal changes that came through under HR1. I think you will hear from all three of us today around that. So for my purposes, I am focusing primarily on the changes that are coming to Medicaid and Marketplace. In Medicaid, as you can see, and I do encourage everyone, if you did not see the HCA presentation on October 16th, there's some very good data in that presentation. And just as we all collectively digest the full impacts of HR1, it's, it's a great resource there. So the big three that I wanted to call out for this conversation today, the eligibility determinations, excuse me, that will increase from every 12 months to every six months, the work requirements that are going to affect a very specific population, and the eligibility restrictions that we have around certain lawfully present immigrants. That is going to create a significant amount of churn or turnover or just changes in the coverage population. And we expect it to be very detrimental to the overall number of Medicaid enrollees. The estimate there, 620,000, again, came from HCA's presentation. That includes these items, as well as I think some other factors to just really wrap our heads around the size of the folks who are going to be dealing with additional administrative burdens by and large that will affect their ability to stay covered under Medicaid and the Washington Apple Health Program. Next slide. So federal action or inaction also is going to have a significant effect on our population enrolled through the exchange, as well as probably other ripple effects, right? Certainly, you heard comments earlier about that. And also, you know, just the general trends that we are seeing in healthcare. I appreciated especially the comments from Jane after the data presentation we all just saw, recognizing we are seeing a lot of cost increases for various reasons that is affecting the pricing of premiums right now and the average increase to premiums for between, you know, plan year 2025 and plan year 2026. That is for a lot of reasons, you know, your prescription drug costs, your increased acuity and utilization. Generally, it is good that people are getting care and the medicines they need. That increase comes with a price. And unfortunately, that is what we are seeing reflected in how our members are, are costing out their premiums. And then we also just have the general uncertainty, again, to say the least, about the federal subsidies. We anticipate a very messy implementation if the federal subsidies are ultimately passed, which we would very much like to go through with you. If those are not passed, that's also a tough conversation that we need to have. So I did have this estimate from the Health Benefit Exchange for the 80,000 Washingtonians. My understanding is that has actually, that estimate has decreased, and especially now that we are in open enrollment. We are, I'm being, I was told earlier today, actually, that, you know, there are going to hopefully be positive things happening as folks are engaging with the exchange and all of the different mechanisms that have gone out before open enrollment, during open enrollment. And so I'm going to heavily, heavily, heavily caveat that by the end of open enrollment, we are excited to see, looking forward to see how much that total enrollment has actually changed between 25 and 26. We would very much like it to be significantly smaller than this 80,000 for the difference, right? Next slide. All right, and priorities, something that I have already been talking about since starting this job, as well as expect to be in conversations with legislators for the next several months as we all get through March. We are heavily focused on protecting access to coverage options. We are well aware that an increase in Washington's overall uninsured population is bad for the system writ large and every single stakeholder within that system. And so we are doing creative thinking of how we can protect affordable options in particular and prioritize protecting coverage. We're also greatly concerned about seeing costs shift between the state regulated populations and non-state regulated populations, your federal populations. I think that we are having, we are hearing from our members that they are seeing cost shifts in their negotiations. And so that is something we are very sensitive to. And especially when we have different policies, even within the state regulated populations. We are very firmly believe that all state regulated populations should have the same policies apply to them, not just for administrative simplification, but also because of the cost implications when you apply one policy to only one population and not the others. And recognizing, again, the regulatory environment does have a role to play in those sorts of decisions and how administrative costs are ultimately affecting the system writ large. And generally, because we are going into a difficult budget situation, as we are, again, all well aware for many different reasons, we are also thinking about how to ensure a solid financial foundation for our state programs. And that is across, again, populations. We really want to make sure that everyone has affordable coverage options. The state has worked very hard to, to decrease the overall percentage of uninsured individuals. We want to keep working on that. We know it's going to be an uphill battle. So with that, turn it over.
Thank you so much, Marissa. And Mark, if you're willing to turn on your microphone. Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for having me here today. My name is Mark Mantai. I serve as CEO of the Vancouver Clinic. I've been in that role since 2015. And prior to that, I have another 36 years of experience in healthcare delivery. I want to start with a patient's story. So let's call this patient Michael. He's 65 years old. He has an extensive problem list, includes COPD, insulin dependent diabetes, stage three kidney failure, complete heart block with a pacers, below knee amputation, tobacco use, and a history of stroke. This is a tough patient. In 2017, this patient had four hospital admits and numerous ER visits. In 2018, this patient had 15 hospital admissions and saw their PCP only four times and numerous ER visits along with that. When Michael joined our neighborhood clinic, which is a polychronic adult medicine clinic that we offer, his initial appointment with a PCP was one hour and then subsequent appointments were all 40 minutes each. And his caregiver was invited to attend those appointments. Since he started that regimen, he's only had one hospital admission and no visits to the ER. I tell you this story because I believe the only way to get a handle on runaway healthcare costs is by delivering more primary care upstream through an integrated system and in less expensive settings than our hospitals. Vancouver Clinic is, is the largest independent physician owned multi-specialty medical practice in the Pacific Northwest. And we care for about 230,000 patients in Southwest Washington and Oregon with nearly 600 clinicians and more than 2,000 employees. The mission of Vancouver Clinic is pretty simple and profound. It's to care for people. And we include patients, caregivers, and community in that definition. We're deeply committed to expanding access for rapidly growing population. And in the recent years, we've opened several new clinics, expanded urgent care, specialty services, and invested in facilities to better serve our community. We also care for nearly 23,000 Medicaid patients, most of whom are women and children. I know I speak for many in the clinician community that we are exactly the kind of healthcare organization this state needs to be supporting. We lower the cost of care while increasing access and improving outcomes. And while hospitals play a critical role in the healthcare ecosystem, it's our goal to keep patients out of that high cost setting by preventing manageable conditions from worsening. Systems of care like Vancouver Clinic are accountable for managing patients upstream, managing chronic disease, treating urgent needs outside the ER, providing surgery in our ambulatory surgery center rather than hospitals. We save the patients and the system millions and maybe billions. This is the kind of innovation that Washington State needs more of, not less. Yet, our ability to serve the community is threatened by recent changes in state policy. We're subject to a dramatically increased BNO tax. As a half billion dollar organization, the increased BNO tax and surcharge for our medical group adds $5.5 million in new annual costs, funds that are critical for care, delivery, expansion, instability. And unlike other businesses, we can't pass these on. Our rates are fixed by government and private insurers. Medical groups operate on a high revenue but low margins. We're kind of like the grocery business. We do not receive hospital tax breaks or nonprofit exemptions. This, this tax structure is uniquely punitive and it directly jeopardizes care for underserved populations, including the 23,000 Medicaid patients I mentioned earlier. Medicaid reimbursement rates in the state of Washington are among the worst in the nation. And I know you know this. It makes it hard for physicians, clinics, and medical groups to see those patients who need them the most. And we do want to see them. The rates are not sufficient to cover the cost of providing services, so they're provided at a loss by many of these organizations. Without adequate investment in our state's Medicaid program, Washingtonians can expect increased difficulty accessing timely and specialty care, more practice closures and mergers. I'm sensitive to the consolidation, but many, much of it is happening because organizations can't make it financially. Meanwhile, inflation, post pandemic utilization, all this stuff is contributing to increase costs across the system. Looking ahead and building on what Marissa said, we're all going to have to deal with effects of HR1. And I must acknowledge that the loss of coverage for many patients will exacerbate pressures on our system, which is already fragile. We see patients waiting longer for care and more pressures on employers to cross subsidize. If I had an easy answer for this, I would offer it. But please know that none of us want to see this kind of damage done. And finally, as a participant in the cost benchmarking, I urge you to pay attention to the letter submitted by WSMA regarding concerns with the methodology. Ideally, organizations should be measured on what they can control and the attribution of hospital costs to physicians can be a very difficult issue to deal with. So thanks for the opportunity to, to speak with you today. I admire your work and I look forward to any further dialogue we might have.
Thank you so much, Mark. And next up, we have Matt Lund from UW Medicine. And Matt is joining us remotely. Matt, you should have received a panelist link and you can go ahead. Yes, and you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself and turn on video if you are able to do so.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, Matt. Please go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, everybody. I didn't see the buttons there. So I really appreciate you allowing me to, to appear remotely. And, and thanks, everyone, for, for holding this, this meeting up. As announced, my name is Matt Lund. I'm the Chief Contracting Officer here at UW Medicine, where I and my team negotiate, manage, maintain, or reimbursement contracts with carriers and payers on behalf of UW Medicine Hospitals and providers. As the boards aware, UW Medicine is the state's academic health system. Our, our mission is simply to improve the health of the public. Our hospitals include Harborview Medical Center and UW Medical Center with campuses of Mott Lake and Northwest. We have just over 1,300 beds between the two hospitals. That includes also Level One Trauma Center, Burn Center. We do solid organ transplants, tertiary quaternary care, deliver babies, primary care, and everything else in between. We're proud to serve the people of Washington and the Whammy region. We're proud to serve patients across the socioeconomic spectrum. Over two thirds of our care is delivered to persons on a government insurance program such as Medicaid, Medicare, TRICARE, VA, et cetera. And I really am here hoping to utilize this opportunity to discuss with the board a chance for there to be a greater collaboration between the board and hospitals. Specifically, that is regarding this idea of what constitutes cost. As the board's aware, the board was established by the legislature to reduce healthcare cost growth and make recommendations to the legislature, among other things. On review of the board's draft report and in listening to some of the testimony today, it's evident that a lot of the focus that the board has put on affordability is placed on hospital healthcare costs, hospital costs. But it's important to direct the board to its own data, which demonstrates that hospital payment rates in Washington are, are average. which demonstrates that hospital payment rates in Washington are average when compared to other states, but that Washington's hospital margins are low or even negative due to the high operating costs for hospitals in Washington. It's our hope that the board will take a bigger picture, a bigger look at the bigger picture, rather, use its position to promote long-term sustainability for hospitals and assure patient access by addressing the underlying costs of healthcare. As the board's aware, today and especially in 2023, we were just coming out of the pandemic. There was a pent-up demand for services. I think that definitely has something to do with the increase in utilization in that particular year. But even today, we're still seeing this pent-up demand. People continuing to seek services that they put off or delayed during closures in the pandemic. Yet, costs are continuing to increase on those inputs to delivery, the cost of delivery of care. And those are mostly outside of the control of hospitals. Specifically, I'm talking about supplies, devices, drugs, and other things necessary to provide care. The costs are getting higher as our shortages. As the board's probably aware, bargain contract wages for nursing and other staff have increased substantially, close to 20% increases in some cases. Costs related to things like the acquisition of organs for solid organ transplant have increased by double digits. Hospitals face insufficient post-acute care availability. The board is probably aware that in any given day at UW Medicine, 175 of our 1,300 beds are taken up by patients who cannot be discharged to post-acute care because there is no placement for them. Those patients remain in our hospital. And what little reimbursement we get, if we get reimbursement for those extra days, is not nearly enough to cover the cost of care for the services. As the board's also aware, hospitals in Washington are required by law to provide charity care to persons meeting certain income thresholds. We're happy to do it, but that carries a large burden as well. The board is probably aware that each month UW Medicine's hospitals provide between $16 million and $18 million in charity care. That's per month. That's a number that we expect to increase significantly as the effects of HR1 begin to take effect. Medicaid cuts and, of course, cuts to the exchange premium subsidies. Those will all result in higher numbers of uninsured people in Washington. That's going to lead to a higher cost of care. The demand for care will continue, but reimbursement for the care will start to disappear. All of these things are largely outside of hospitals' control and contribute to the rising costs of care, and they threaten the sustainability of our healthcare system. Affordability of healthcare is an absolute requirement that must happen. You will get no argument from hospitals on that. But without looking at the entire picture, we can't really evaluate the cost of care. I was happy to see the board, hear the board, discuss being solutions-oriented right before this particular panel. And I appreciate that. But it was disheartening to see in the board's report. There weren't discussions of things, sorts of things that I just mentioned. I suppose the board is probably aware that last year there was a hurricane in North Carolina, Hurricane Helene, that stopped production at the Baxter Healthcare Plant that created a shortage of IV fluid for hospitals in the country. And if you're not aware of that, I hope you go back and take a look. That certainly contributed to the rise in healthcare costs. We didn't stop seeing patients. We turned no one else away, but that certainly increased the cost of care. Those are the sorts of things that I really hope that the board will take a look at, acknowledge, and address those cost drivers, and really look at the big picture and understand. If you're going to do things like recommend that large groups get together and purchase healthcare to drive down the cost of care, that's a great suggestion. But I think there has to be an understanding of those costs that can actually be driven down. And there are a lot of costs that hospitals face that they really have no control over. We can do the best we can to negotiate the best price for services or for supplies, and we certainly do. UW Medicine's supply chain is ranked number one in its cohort by Visient when it comes to pricing efficiency, but the prices are still too high. And so finding ways to remain viable and sustainable against that are difficult. And I think that the board would miss a great opportunity if it didn't also study that and understand how that affects the cost of care, the affordability of care for patients. To turn a blind eye to that would be doing a disservice to the bigger picture, particularly if you're going to be making suggestions to the legislature. Legislature needs to be aware of that as well, to talk to them about the affordability of premiums and pricing without looking at the underlying costs doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We face the same types of pressures that a lot of other businesses do, but we're so reliant upon the services, and we can't close our doors and turn anybody away, nor do we want to. But that cost is high, and it's rising. And we all know it's going to start to get higher as we deal with more and more uninsured persons in Washington. So what we're hoping for the board to do is to help us seek solutions that'll make healthcare more affordable while sustaining that access and quality. I was happy to hear Mark from the Vancouver Clinic talk about finding ways to improve the health of the public by promoting primary care. We are completely behind that as well. We also asked the board to explore things like expansion of local healthcare workforce so that there are more providers for people to go see and find ways to advocate for more and alternative settings for post-acute care so that our patients who are stuck in the hospital have a place to go. That's something that could really, really, really help out with things. And of course, finding ways to reduce administrative burden and helping us to find other ways to address our high-input costs on labor, drugs, and supplies. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you today. I really am excited about this opportunity, and I hope that we can work together to really take a look at the entire picture. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt, and all of our panelists. We are running a little behind, so we're going to do a little pivot. And instead of asking discussion questions, pardon me, just wanted to give Cost Board members an opportunity. If you had any questions for our panelists on this panel, the payer and industry panel, we can take a few moments to ask those to the panelists, and then we'll move on to our next panel. Yeah, please go ahead, Ingrid.
Okay, Matt, thank you for what you shared. I'm just curious. We hear a lot about charity care as a concern, and it will grow due to the federal policy changes. What percent of your overall, what can you describe numerically? What is the portion of loss that you're concerned about to charity care versus your overall revenue?
Looking at a finance sheet right now. I can get back to you with specific numbers on that. But if we look at just charity care, we're talking about between $192 and $216 million during normal times. That's different than uncompensated care, which is quite a bit higher. $188 million in fiscal '23 for UW Medical Center and $238 million for Harborview Medical Center.
Thank you. In addition to those global numbers, can you put it as a reference to your overall budget?
I'll quote another panel member and say, I'm a lawyer. I don't do data, but I will get that number to you, to the board. I'm looking at it right now, but that's not math I can do on the fly. What I'll say, though, is that we understand that charity care is a part of doing the business here in Washington. And this is our mission population here at UW Medicine. But to say that charity care is going to increase without an expectation that there will be some sort of way to address that or to constrain how that's addressed, again, without looking at the bigger picture, is really what we're concerned about. I don't think that there's really any concern about setting aspirational benchmarks, but making sure that those benchmarks reflect the full picture really is important. And that's really why I think the real opportunity the board has to look a little bit deeper into all of the cost drivers.
Thank you, Matt. And not seeing any other hands, and since we're running a little bit behind, I think we will close this panel and thank the panelists, Marissa, Mark, and Matt. Thank you for traveling from Seattle. Thank you for joining us, Matt, virtually for the presentations and for all the time and effort. Greatly appreciated. And now we will welcome Emily Bryce, Sam Hatzenbeller, and Sulan Mellernack. And I apologize in advance for that. We'll give you a minute to get settled.
All right, is that working? Great. You hear me? Okay, well, thank you. As we're getting our slides set up there, just wanted to thank you all for having us. And Emily and I are some of your biggest fans, so just really appreciate the Cost Board's work. And it's especially important given the scope of federal changes. So really appreciate you having us here to talk about healthcare affordability challenges from the patient perspective, which is, of course, the whole point of our healthcare system is to support our patients, right? So I am Sam Hatzenbeller. I'm the Legislative Director for the Economic Opportunity Institute.
And I'm Emily Bryce, co-executive director of Northwest Health Law Advocates.
And we are presenting jointly together today because our organizations work so closely together. We also are here representing, in addition to our organizations, representing the Fair Health Prices Campaign of Washington, which is an effort that Emily and I co-founded with Jim Freiberg of the Patient Coalition of Washington. It's an effort that unites patient and labor and business advocates in order to drive down the price of healthcare. So we're going to give you a sneak peek today at some just data that just, a poll that just closed here in our state around healthcare affordability challenges. And then we will actually share some videos of some real-life people here in Washington to talk about their own experience. Next slide, please. And thank you so much for managing the slides. Could not do this meeting without you. So, all right. So as Cost Board members know, unlike many other states here in Washington, we don't yet have much state-level data on underinsurance and affordability. For those who are unfamiliar, underinsurance is that measure showing when people have insurance but can't afford to use it because of affordability challenges. The legislature passed the Cost Board 2.0 bill in 2023, House Bill 1508. And that would have required the board, of course, to conduct a biannual underinsurance survey as well as an employer insurance trend survey that, as we know, was put on hold last session because of budget challenges. So that really leaves the state without important affordability data at a time when there's so many changes coming from the federal level. So in the meantime, we have taken it upon ourselves to conduct another statewide survey. This is our third time doing this. This year is with the Altarm survey. We started that with them as well in 2022. And then last year with our national partners, United States of Care, with a national polling firm, DRI. We also presented to the Cost Board about those results as well. So in some ways, these surveys can really kind of serve as a good point-in-time baseline for data that, you know, at a time when we are seeing a lot of changes. So this is going to be really important in the coming period. So what is the survey? When was it? It, as I said, just closed. It was open for a month in mid-September to mid-October, and almost 1,400 people responded. And this is just a preview, as I said, of top lines. And Altarm will be publishing their more complete analysis in the coming weeks. Next slide, thank you. So we wanted to ask, you know, what are your experiences in the healthcare system? What challenges are you facing? And we found, very alarmingly, 66%, so that's two in three, of respondents went without healthcare or delayed healthcare or changed the use of their medications in the last year just due to cost alone. And to compare to the previous Altarm survey in 2022, that was 56%. So it's increased this year. The survey here, let's see, I just want to point it out because I know the font is small on this slide, but important to note that while all Washingtonians are impacted, responded, being highly impacted by cost, there are also disparities. So I want to note that. On the left there, you can see by race. So 73% of respondents of color responded that they reported delaying care due to cost, and that's compared to 62% of white, non-Hispanic respondents. On the right is by disability status. So you can see that a very high number, 79% of households with someone with a disability, were impacted by cost compared to 60% of non-disabled households. We are, of course, working on sharing much higher, you know, much more detailed level of disaggregating the data by race and ethnicity and other demographics. So that'll be coming your way soon. Stay tuned. Also, there's, of course, always the challenges with small populations with privacy concerns as well. But stay tuned for more info on that. And I will pass it to Emily to speak to the next point.
Thanks, Sam. So the survey also shows that the impact of cost challenges is widespread, and it's hitting many different types of households in Washington regardless of income or insurance type. And as you'll see in this next slide, interestingly and troublingly, the lowest-income households, so households earning under $75,000, are struggling about three-fourths of the time. Even when they have access to Apple Health, we're seeing about 82% of those folks are struggling with cost. And that's very disturbing because that's intended to provide free and comprehensive coverage. That's the goal of that program. This is actually worse than we saw in 2022, the last time we asked this question, when we saw that 70% of people with Apple Health were struggling. What can we make of that? We have asked Altarm to analyze the full responses to give us more sense of what is happening there. In 2022, what we saw in those free responses when we asked Apple Health and low-income respondents the challenges that we're facing, we saw behavioral health challenges, access challenges, dental access challenges, provider network challenges, care denials, prior authorization. All of the things that we know are challenges in Apple Health today and things that we need to work on as a state. So that is really a watch point, I think, in this data for us here, particularly as we enter this time where Apple Health is likely to be squeezed. But the problem is not unique to people with low income or public coverage, even at the highest income bracket. So this are folks that are earning over $200,000 a year. Households are still delaying or deferring treatment half the time due to cost. And that is another watch point for us. This is really across the board. And people with employer-sponsored insurance, as you'll hear about from other panelists, are struggling just as much as people in the individual market or other market sectors. Next slide, please. The survey also gives us a sense of how Washingtonians are coping with healthcare affordability challenges. We saw that one in every five respondents we surveyed had outstanding medical bills that they hadn't been able to pay, often in the $1,000 to $2,000 range. And as we saw in previous years, these slides can be a bit of a broken record from the past times we've done these surveys. We saw that folks are really making difficult trade-offs. We call this sometimes survival math when they're dealing with their medical bills. And that involves trading off with basic needs like housing, food, heat, taking out loans, putting medical bills on credit cards. And all of that, of course, leads to folks being chased by collections agencies, entering the downstream of medical debt where they can face very steep interest rates. And what we see is that getting sick one time can have a long tail of economic hardship for people that impacts them for years and years. This is the situation today before we see any of the federal changes that we're concerned about that are coming. If we go to the next slide, we'll hear, you know, the data is heartbreaking, of course, but we've also found that people have plenty to say about these numbers. As we have in the past, we asked respondents, if you could change one thing about the healthcare system, what would it be? And no surprise, people are piping mad about healthcare affordability. We really see this in the responses. We did not include any with swear words, but they're there. And here are just a few of those many responses that people shared.
All right. So we, in addition to these quotes in the poll, we also wanted to provide some, you know, real people in Washington, from their own words, their own voice. So we have three videos to share. We know that kind of showing the, or understanding the magnitude of the problem of healthcare affordability is sometimes difficult. affordability is sometimes difficult to grasp. So it's important to hear from actual people about their experience. The first one, while we're pulling that up, is a navigator named Toa, and she works at the Asian Counseling and Referral Services Agency in South King County. And she's going to be talking about what her community is experiencing. And our fingers are crossed that this video and audio will work.
My name is Hoa, and I believe it is crucial that people have continued access to subsidies for health coverage. I've been working on Asian Counseling and Referral Service for eight years, helping people indeed get connected to resources and services. Not too long ago, I helped a community member who speaks Vietnamese overcome a very difficult time in her life. Due to budget cuts at her employer, she suddenly got laid off from a company that she'd been working with for decades. And this happened just two years before she was eligible for Medicare. She was unable to get unemployment benefits due to the company's inaccurate documentation. So she didn't know how she could afford basic necessities and health insurance for the next two years. I helped her access free or low-cost health insurance through Washington Health Plan Finder. And after that, she began to regain some hope. She was able to choose another health insurance that offered enough coverage for everything she needed. However, the monthly premium would have been over $1,014 and she couldn't afford that. Given her older age and health concerns, it would have been a challenge to find another job and start over with just two years before she would be eligible to Medicare. The full cost of the premium would have been a severe march up. But thanks to the incredible savings of $798 per month in federal advanced premium tax credits and $114 per month in Cascade Care Savings, she only had to pay one-tenth of that cost, only $102 per month. She was so glad that she could continue to receive care for her chronic health conditions and afford daily medications. That savings of $912 a month meant that she could pay for housing and bills and make sure that her family and her kids, who she always put first, had enough food on the table. This success story wouldn't have been possible without the availability of advanced premium tax credits and Cascade Care Savings. So please, continue funding Cascade Care Savings in 2027. We're counting on your support. Thank you for your hard work in providing community access to affordable healthcare for all Washingtonians because we all have the right to be healthy and happy.
All right, thank you and appreciation out to ACRS and to Hoa for sharing that. The second story is kind of, you know, I am personally hearing a record number of my friends and family and neighbors and community members. I'm sure everyone here is as well, hearing from them about their high costs and how changes are affecting them. That includes exchange customers, people who buy on the individual market, who are getting less affordability help starting in '26 because of Congress's failure to extend the premium tax credits. So let's hear now from Ed in Clark County.
Hi, my name is Ed. I'm 55. I live here in battleground Washington. Last year, my family and I paid $2,219 for Regent's Buchros Bronze Plan, the most affordable and inexpensive healthcare plan on the marketplace that we could find. This year, that plan is increasing $430 a month or 19.5%. And so we'll end up paying over, well, nearly $32,000 in premiums, which seems to our financial planning like another college tuition. And even trying to use that plan, those are high deductible plans. So per person, our deductible was $9,000 out of pocket last year. It's going to go up to $10,000 this year. And the total out-of-pocket costs that we could possibly get was $18,000. And now that's gone up to nearly $20,000. And even to use it was affordable. When I came down with food poisoning because of bad tamale, I ended up in the hospital for about four hours. And all they did were take some blood tests and give me a few bags of saline solution, three bags of saline solution. And the, the hospital ended up charging me $6,559 for that. Then insurance negotiated that down to $3,200, $3,123. And that doesn't even take into account the cost for the ambulance ride or the EMT techs or the doctor. So, you know, the overall cost was charged at about $10,000 for what seems like little or no care. It's, healthcare in this country is just not affordable for people. And I'm worried about what the recent technical changes are going to do to both my family and just really others around us who are having a hard time as it is. So I hope we can do something about it. Thanks.
Thank you to Ed. And just our, our last video here, we, in addition to hearing about the specific cost impacts, we're also just hearing from people who are concerned about the changes in the healthcare landscape. Consolidation is increasing of hospitals and clinics, and that translates to higher costs and plans being more limited. So we'll hear from Bryn from Skagit County next.
We also need a separate facility, a comfortable normal provider.
Oh, apologies for the sound. That was a bit quieter. I'm not sure if people virtually were able to hear. Just a quick recap. This is Bryn, who's in Skagit County, and she found that care was much more difficult to come by after a merger. And she ended up having to drive hours to children's in Seattle to get care for her daughter. And yeah, just after the merger, seeing providers dropping coverage, higher cost, difficulty to get primary care. So quick summary of what, what Bryn was talking about. So yeah, just, oh, and then she mentioned the importance of limiting hospital and drug, prescription drug prices. So just thanks to Bryn for sharing her story.
Thanks. So if we go to the next slide, just looking ahead, we're glad that you got to hear today from some of the many folks whose lives are impacted by the actions of this board and other policymakers in our state. Your work really matters on this board, more so now than ever. And as you know, this board launched five years ago after decades of cost increases. And as we've talked about today, those cost pressures have only continued to mount with the premium increases of the last two years and failing to meet the benchmark. And I think everyone knows here about the, the impacts of HR1. We've talked about it earlier today. I'm also a lawyer who can't do math, but the number that I'm carrying around in my head these days is one in 20. And that's the estimate by my, my own math of the number of Washingtonians whose coverage is at grave risk due to HR1. And we know what that's going to mean in our system. It's going to mean more of the medical debt, the skipped care that we talked about earlier today, that Washingtonians are already experiencing, the rationing of their own care that they're doing. And we also know what's going to happen to our healthcare system. And we, we heard about this from our panelists earlier, the strains that healthcare system is facing. And we anticipate that there will be those who are looking to make a quick buck in this environment, private equity investors, other investors who look to come in, swallow up stressed independent providers and, and find a way to make some money in this strained environment. So what can we do? That is the big question today. First, I want to encourage the board to retain a strong benchmark. We talked about that earlier today. And recognizing the, the stressors that we talked about, families' lives cannot be rebased. And so the, the, there is a disconnect between some of the healthcare cost inflationary measures and the inflation and wage growth that we, that we see. And the point of the benchmark is to highlight that disconnect. That's why the benchmark exists. Second, we need to do everything we can do to retain the progress that we have made on insurance coverage in this state. And I think on that matter, we can all agree, this is going to require some tough conversations with business leaders, with other leaders in our state about how we can best support a healthy workforce and strong communities. And without investments this year, I anticipate that we will see folks on the street as a result of not having healthcare by the end of this year. Third, as the board recognized in your draft priorities for 2026, we can't let our healthcare system slip even further into the corporatization track that we have begun to see already during this chaotic period. Last month, you did hear from Senator Robinson about her corporate practice of medicine policy that would help place some, some guardrails on healthcare profiteering. And the state is already working to monitor health entity ownership to begin that process of monitoring it under a bill that got started last year from the Department of Health. We need to keep up those efforts. That's not intended to be punitive, but really just to, to take a realistic look at our, the strain that our healthcare entities are going to be facing and to make sure that we have a chance to understand how our healthcare landscape is changing around us during this period of time because the stakes are so high for families and patients in Washington. This is a challenging time. It's also an opportunity for transformational change, as we've talked about previously, and we are looking forward to working with all of you in 2026.
Thank you so much, Emily and Sam, for that. And as we have one more panel member, Sulan from SEIU 1199. And while Sulan is getting connected, just wanted to, to note in preparing with Emily and Sam, several months ago was noting that, you know, HCA, the cost board was not able to perform the under insurance survey this year. And Emily and Sam looked for ways to be able to perform it on their own. And as you see, they presented the results today and just thought that was really emblematic of the type of collaboration and, you know, partnerships that folks have been speaking to, to kind of address these affordability challenges. So just huge thank you to you both and for bringing that data back to us today. And Sulan, if you are able to unmute yourself, please go ahead.
Hello. Thanks for having me. My name is Sulan Mulneric. I am so happy to be on this panel and really appreciated the comments from Emily and Sam. This is an extremely crucial and important conversation that requires our attention, data and expertise, but also it requires bold action. SEIU 1199 Northwest, which is led by our president, Jane Hopkins, is a healthcare workers' union of frontline caregivers. I am so proud to be able to support the incredible leadership of these healthcare workers across Washington State. They're striving for both quality patient care and safe workplaces. And as we all know, quality patient care and safe workplaces are intrinsically intertwined. When I talk about rising costs, I'm talking about costs that are disproportionately offloaded onto consumers and workers, costs that are barriers for accessing timely, high-value healthcare, and costs that rise faster than the wages of both workers and consumers. The impacts of these rising costs are exacerbated by racism, sexism, xenophobia, and lead to, or can lead to discriminatory practices. Rising costs is not a new problem. However, this is a problem that is escalating at a very alarming rate with very real implications for our community members, for healthcare workers, and honestly, for the sustainability of our healthcare infrastructure. Rising costs impact consumer utilization by creating care avoidance behaviors. And when care is finally accessed, it is more than often happening in high-cost settings like the emergency department where chronic or long-term issues are unable to be addressed. It's particularly important to flag that when we're thinking about our healthcare infrastructure as a whole, dynamics like these rapidly rising costs lead us to a position where the expansion we see in our healthcare system, the direction of, of money and resources in our healthcare system starts to lead towards things like the rapid expansion of many freestanding emergency departments by large healthcare companies. This is a newer dynamic for us in Washington State and I think really underlines the impact to our healthcare infrastructure. It also means that consumers, which are, you know, actually also include healthcare workers, are adopting these care avoidance behaviors and meaning they're less likely to see healthcare providers and frontline caregivers they're in community with, those that they have long relationships with, have shared experience with. And potentially, most importantly, they're less likely to see healthcare providers with the specific long-term experience that they need if the impact is them coming into these high-cost emergency settings. Just in my last few seconds, I wanted to narrow in on the impact to frontline healthcare workers. Specifically, healthcare workers are put in the circumstance of addressing high patient acuity in understaffed situations, and they're largely working for wages significantly below what a living wage would be, particularly if the healthcare worker has any children almost in any part of Washington State. This is extremely unsafe for workers and it's extremely unsafe for patients. And then one final point is something that I wanted to comment on that I heard raised during the, the public comment portion is that the salaries of wages and, sorry, the salaries and wages accounting for a huge amount of a hospital's expenses really makes sense. Healthcare providers and frontline healthcare workers make up the overwhelming number of peoples working in entities. We do want to see the wages and benefits and salaries of healthcare workers take up the expenses. Because the point of these entities is to provide healthcare. One thing to note, in Washington State, over the last 10 years, the proportion of salaries and wages compared to the total expenses has declined rapidly over this last decade, due largely to administrative bloat, the impacts of merger and acquisition, and the increasing role of private equity in our healthcare in our state. Of course, this is not the case for every healthcare entity, particularly those that are not system affiliated, that are rural hospitals, FQHCs and other similar entities. But I just wanted to touch on that point. So thank you for having me and really thank you so much for your work, cost board people. So thank you for having me and really thank you so much for your work, Cost Board people. It is so important to our union and to healthcare workers across the state. We really need the transformational and bold change and the points uplifted by the fair health prices folks. With that, I will close.
Thank you so much, Sulan, and thank you to all of our panelists on this Consumer and Labor panel. Again, we have found ourselves falling a little bit behind time-wise, but do want to just provide Cost Board members a quick opportunity if there are any questions for our Consumer and Labor panelists.
Don't see any questions, but I would echo the thanks that Ross articulated for your work in bringing forward this consumer survey. So thank you and filling our budget gap.
I think we have Bianca, one quick question.
Yeah, it's just a quick question for Emily and Sam. And I think, Ross, you might have mentioned it too, the data that you showed, that was Washington-specific, right? And if, so do we know how some of those numbers compare to other states or was it just Washington?
Washington-specific.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe that this is also indicative of a trend across the country.
Thank you so much.
We'll be sure to share the expanded results and analysis with the board when that comes out.
Well, thank you all again, Emily, Sam, and Sulan. We greatly appreciate your time today and coming down here to be with us and presenting. So thank you. And so for our last panel, I'd like to invite Mark Siegel, Patrick Connor, and Charity Farnworth to join us today. Yes. And I'll give folks a minute to settle in and then we'll begin.
Thank you very much. I'm Patrick Connor, Washington State Director with NFIB. Given the lateness of the hour, I would happily defer to Charity Farnworth so you have an opportunity to hear from an executive at one of our member businesses so to get a firsthand understanding of what some of our small employers are facing. And with the time remaining, I'll be happy to offer some additional remarks.
Thank you so much, Patrick. And is Charity online with us, AB?
I am.
Thank you so much. Please go ahead, Charity.
Thank you very much, Patrick. I appreciate this opportunity. I just want to say hello to everybody. Thank you for having me here. My name is Charity Farnworth. I'm the Human Resource Director here at Motion Auto Supply in Spokane, Washington. We are a local employee-owned company with locations in Spokane, Aerie Heights, and OMAC Washington. I just wanted to share a real scenario that our business is facing right now. We've recently met with our insurance brokers and we are going over our increases for the year. With Washington State minimum wage hike going up 2.75%, if we use an average wage of $20 per hour, a 2.75% increase equals roughly 55 cents per hour per employee, or about $96.80 per month for an employee who's paid semi-monthly. For our workforce, that comes to a minimum additional cost for our company of roughly $111,000 per year. Our health insurance renewal, which is the whole purpose of this, came in with a 34% increase if we keep our current plan, an added cost of nearly $200,000 per year. Even the lowest cost option offered by our provider that covers all employees still carries a 25.41% increase, which translates to over $146,000 per year in an increase. Under ACA compliance, we are currently charging employees $200 per month for their health insurance premiums, which equals 5.4% of our lowest paid employee's annual wage. If we were to raise that to 250 per month, it would put us at 6.8% of their annual wage, adding an extra $50 per month to what employees are already paying. That becomes important here in a minute. To add to these challenges, hiring for entry-level positions has become increasingly difficult and finding skilled professionals has become almost impossible. The talent pool is shrinking while wage competition continues to grow. At this point, retention is absolutely crucial. So I ask you to envision yourself sitting across from a young employee or a single parent who is struggling to pay the high cost of rent, let alone buy food or pay for gas to get them to work. How do we go to these employees and say, here's your annual raise of 2.75%, which is 96.80 per month? But wait, we have to take half of it back to cover rising healthcare premiums. At the end of the day, our employees are the heart of Motion Auto Supply. We need solutions that allow our company and our employees to thrive together, not systems that push us into taking one step forward and two steps back. We are simply asking for the ability to support our employees without being forced to choose between fair wages and affordable healthcare. Small businesses being forced to absorb all these annual cost increases is not sustainable. We hear a lot of talk about supporting small businesses by a local, and we feel like that's just talk. Now is when we need action. Now is the time when Washington needs to lead by example. All of these increases have become just too hard for us as employers to absorb the cost and has become harder for us to ask our employees to share the cost, even under the ACA compliance. And just in addition, I wanted to throw out in one of the conversations about using PCP versus going to a hospital. As we were sitting here and everybody was talking, I looked to see when the next available appointment would be for me to go see my primary care physician for a new problem. And the soonest that I could be seen would be January 6th. So if there was something that arose for me in an illness or pain or an ailment of any kind, I wouldn't know where else to go besides an urgent care or even an emergency room. So I think that if going to a primary care physician and encouraging people to do so, I think that if more primary care physicians were available or your primary care physician was available more often would be something that I think needs to be pushed. Thanks for having me. I really don't have anything else to say, but I really appreciate being able to listen to everybody today. It has definitely given me a broader understanding of all different aspects of the healthcare system.
Thank you so much, Charity. Really appreciate that. And especially the part about, you know, difference between words and actions. And just appreciate you sharing that today. And now we'll go to Patrick, followed by Mark.
Thanks again. NFIB appreciates the opportunity to be before you again this year, as we have in the past. Again, I'm Patrick Connor, the State Director for the National Federation of Independent Business. Who are we? We're the nation and state's leading small business organization, advocacy organization. We have representation in all 50 state capitals, as well as the nation's capital. And in fact, one of my federal colleagues yesterday testified before the US Senate Finance Committee on this almost identical topic. And much of what you'll hear from me today is a Washington State-specific spin on some of the same comments that we made before Congress just yesterday. The small group and individual health markets nationally and in our state face grave challenges. We've outlined some key factors and findings in our written comments that we provided in advance as a supplement to today's remarks, but you're already aware of most of them. Double-digit rate increases have become the norm. While it's easy to cast blame on Washington DC for the 20% jump in individual health plan rates in 2026 for the Washington State Health Exchange, our own state actions are directly inflating insurance costs to our own residents. Yesterday's small group market rate announcement is astounding. The insurers' nearly 10% average rate increase request for small businesses was painful enough. To learn that the Insurance Commissioner's Office granted them 30% more on average than they asked for is mind-boggling. When digging deeper, the fact that nearly half of the covered lives in the small group market will be hit with a rate increase 56% higher than the insurer asked for is unconscionable. Sadly, government-driven cost increases are nothing new and one of several factors making health insurance and health services less and less affordable. NFIB's recommendations today will focus on several potential policy changes this board, its participating agencies, and the legislature could undertake to improve the health of these markets and reduce costs to small employers, the families, and individuals we employ. First and foremost, NFIB will reiterate its belief that greater transparency, a central fixture of this board's identity, is essential to any meaningful progress in addressing access and affordability. We must shine more light on the dark corners of the healthcare industry. Specifically, more must be done to expose the practices and resulting cost drivers of pharmacy benefit managers, the continuing growth of not-for-profit insurers' unrestricted surpluses or so-called unassigned funds, two of which together total $3.4 billion, according to third-quarter reports for this year. The extent to which charity care and community benefit requirements of nonprofit hospitals and hospital systems are actually reaching the patients and communities intended, and the growing number of alarming reports about misuse and other excesses in the 340B prescription drug program. The health market, the small group health market in our state is already anemic. Just 206,000 individuals receive coverage there compared to the nearly 700,000 small business owners in this state who employ 1.5 million Washington workers. This board may be in a unique position to convene stakeholders, legislators, agencies, the exchange, insurers, small employers, agents, and brokers to delve into the barriers preventing small businesses from obtaining coverage in this market. We also urge the exchange to revisit the shop, engage with insurers, small employers, and small business advocates to see what changes, if any, could lead to establishing a functioning statewide small business health options plan. Meanwhile, the exchange, OIC, and lawmakers should review any regulatory hurdles or administrative policies that may inhibit the use of individual coverage, health reimbursement arrangements, or ICRA's inside and outside of the exchange. Similarly, more work needs to be done to promote and perhaps require the coupling of health savings accounts with Bronze tier plans in the exchange or other high-deductible health plans outside of it. When it comes to plan design, NFIB believes that the all-plan should be standard plans inside the exchange is exactly the wrong prescription. As one of our small business owners mentioned in the comments we submitted to you, when cost is an issue, unnecessary items are the first to go. Similarly, one-size-fits-all benefit add-ons mandated in exchange plans drive up premiums, deductibles, and other cost-sharing requirements contrary to the intent of standard plans as originally designed. Instead, we urge the exchange to thoroughly review benefit utilization to see whether there is a possibility of finding a less expansive plan that still meets essential health benefits and actuarial value requirements, whether that is possible, and particularly at the silver level which we believe could lead to greater affordability. Provider consolidations, you've heard, and the resulting fee add-ons must also be subjected to greater scrutiny by state regulators. Independent medical practices are small businesses. As such, they face the same challenges providing affordable healthcare coverage to their employees, in addition, a myriad of other increasing costs, and in many cases, decades-long stagnation of reimbursement rates too often force them to sell to hospitals, larger practices, or even private equity firms. This takes decision-making out of local hands, prioritizes profitability over patient needs, produces choice and competition, and often leaves our communities poor for it. While we understand the motivation of hospitals and others to expand and absorb other provider groups to improve their bargaining power against the insurers, as well as the financial challenges driving our independent providers to sell to hospitals or others, unbridled consolidation is proving too costly to consumers. Similarly, the market distortions caused by growth in mergers, acquisitions, and wholly-owned subsidiaries among insurers, PBMs, and health systems should be cause for alarm. Vertical integration and self-dealing can result in opaque pricing strategies that allow insurers to increase profits outside of the medical loss ratio and drive consumer prices ever higher. When speaking about MLRs, we think there might be at least a little bit of silver lining. The Insurance Commissioner's Office earlier this year released an affordability report that bears further examination. In it, the report, as one of its recommendations cites, "increasing medical loss ratios to 88% across the board in all market segments presents an intriguing opportunity to lower premiums, increase provider reimbursements, generate as much as $144 million in increased state tax receipts over four years, or some combination thereof." However, we believe that this board, the Insurance Commissioner, and others should be investigating how widespread the practice of insurers, including internal charges and transactions with their own wholly-owned subsidiaries, are being used as part of their MLR expenditures. Allowing an insurer to spin off prior authorization, utilization review, so-called payment accuracy, IT and analytics, and other services, and then effectively charge themselves for those services does little more than inflate system and premium costs and undermines the intent of the medical loss ratio to limit excess profits and direct premium dollars to actual medical care. If such practices are in fact contributing to higher costs, as we believe they are, the legislature should consider limiting or prohibiting them. Thank you for your time. I know we have another speaker, but I'd be happy to entertain questions afterwards if time allows.
Thank you so much, Patrick. And Mark, I believe you're on the line. When you're ready, please go ahead and unmute and go ahead with your comments. Thank you, Mark.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm the ABP of benefits, employee benefits at Costco, and definitely coming at it, I guess, at a little bit of a different angle. But, you know, we're a large employer. We're in 47 states. But what I've heard today is exactly what, you know, we're experiencing. Our trend for the first half of 2025 is higher than, much higher than what was seen in the state in 2023. So it's definitely had an impact on our business. We were a big plan. We are a simple plan. We only have one option for our employees. It's a low deductible plan. Our people aren't eligible for an HSA offering. The payroll contributions that we ask for from employees are low and also for their family members. We only have in-network-only coverage, which helps the plan's expenses a little bit. We cover 200,000 employees and almost 400,000 lives. 95% of our people are eligible for coverage. 97% of those are covered by our plan. The people that you see at our warehouses are covered by our plan. The only caveat is the people who give out samples aren't covered. They're not our employees. We cover both our full-timers and our part-timers from our talks with other companies, other retailers. That is not how they function. So our leaders have put this philosophy into our plan from the beginning of time. It would be a big change for us, providing these benefits is really a huge piece of our culture. And it's what's helped to make our company as successful as it's been for 40, 50 years, depending on which, we're also part of Price Club, which started in 1976. So it's a combination of those two companies. But we've really done this for the history of our company. But I'll tell you that things are being scrutinized now more than ever. We basically made no plan changes for our 2026 plan year. There are a lot of things that we're talking about for 2027, potentially, that would be very painful to implement if we had to. But the trends that we're seeing right now, you know, I think everybody's feeling like it's not sustainable. And we have that same concern. I, you know, I do think that it's harder for other people in this meeting to say that. Or they're facing harder circumstances. I don't want to, I think it is very tougher. for us. And, you know, from what I've heard from other large retailers and other large companies, they're passing costs on to employees, which is something that we haven't done in years. People who started with our company in 2013 are paying the same amount for their healthcare as they paid in 2013. So, I, you know, it's just something that is unprecedented. And anyhow, that's what I have to say about where things stand in the world from a large employer perspective.
Thank you so much, Mark, for sharing that perspective. And I think we maybe have time for one quick question, if anyone, if any of our cost board members have a question for our business panel.
Who got to the thing first? Okay, Patrick, I'm going to look into the increased, approving more than what was proposed.
Thank you, Jane.
Here's my question. We are hearing, like, the KFF survey, and we are hearing at National Association of Insurance Commissioner meetings about the trend toward level-funded plans for small employers that are essentially, it's like a version of self-funding, but the employer is paying three components to one entity. They're paying forward for anticipated medical claims. They're paying that entity for reinsurance, and they're paying that entity to administer their plan. Do you have, have you heard much, and Washington State may be a little bit less so because of our laws around attachment points, but what are your thoughts on that?
I think it's an interesting proposal. I think it will probably be the larger small businesses, medium-sized firms will be more likely to afford to be able to utilize that type of a plan. To the best of my knowledge, NFIB has not yet taken a position on those, and so I don't want to get too far ahead of myself or my employer on it. But certainly, any opportunity to provide some needed relief to small business owners and to their employees would be welcome, and I'm happy to engage with your office or others to try and achieve some level of cost savings and to help to do our part to bolster the continued enrollment of our employees in employer-sponsored health insurance.
So, one follow-up. One of the concerns that we are hearing, and we actually heard from a broker who presented at NAIC, is that there are some companies that are cherry-picking the healthiest, lowest, right, healthiest, youngest groups, putting those groups into level-funded plans, and then making the traditional small group market older, higher risk. And then, when that employer has an unexpected high-cost employee, they're told, well, now your premium's going to go way up. And then, all of a sudden, the fully insured small group market looks a little bit more appealing. So, just really complicated in terms of the issues. Happy to discuss it with you, but...
Yeah, I think that probably bears a longer conversation we have time for today, but we've had similar conversations when it comes to cherry picking, and whether or not, and to what extent it may be occurring in association health plans. But those have remained one of the most affordable and widest utilized plans among small employers in Washington State.
Thanks, Patrick. Another small business question, because we know it's such a pain point, and there just aren't satisfying options for small businesses, especially micro-business and self-employed folks, many who come to the exchange. And in the current federal environment, we're obviously on a lot of defense and just responding to a lot of policies that we find very harmful to our customers. But we're also always looking for little nuggets of common ground of what they might, you know, what would be, where there is interest that aligns with our interests. And what we know from some of the new leadership at CMS, specifically the part of CMS that has regulatory authority over state-based exchanges, is a real interest in these ICRA platforms. So, I'm wondering if you can give the high level to people what ICRA means, and also that we could follow up later on this topic.
Sure. Basically, ICRA provides...
Terrible acronym, by the way.
It is, yes. That aside, it is, I think, again, a very interesting and innovative approach that deserves further exploration. Essentially, it allows a small employer to set aside certain dollars and reimburse employees then for the cost of that employee to go out to the exchange or to the commercial market and find an individual plan or family plan that works best for them in their circumstances. Oftentimes, that account is also able to be used to reimburse that worker for deductibles and other cost-sharing out-of-pocket expenses. So, while the employer may not be able to afford a high-cost plan in the small group market, they may be able to afford to give a few thousand dollars to each individual employee for them to go out and find a plan that works for them.
And it's pre-tax dollars.
Which is always a good thing. Yes, thank you, Jane.
More discussion to be had. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for the questions for the panel, and thank you all for your participation in the panel. Oh, I see Lois has a hand up first.
Just a quick note. I did offer an ICRA plan in 2022, I think it was. And basically, I chose a lower plan for the employees. But then I did, we would cover deductibles and co-pays from that fund as needed, and it covered up to the amount of their deductible. So, I think that particular year, it was like $3,500. But that was an effective way for us to be able to lower costs. I haven't continued it because oddly, I have two employees, and they both are insured elsewhere. So, now I'm an exchange customer.
Thanks for sharing that, Lois. And I know we're at time, so I want to make sure to thank the entire set of panelists that participated today and the board members. I think it was a really rich conversation and gave us a lot of food for thought as we look to 2026 and continuing these discussions together. I'm sure that the exchange board will also be picking up some of these conversations. So, we are not done today, obviously, but great opportunity to start looking forward to more of these conversations. So, again, I deeply appreciate everybody's time and attention and all the work that went into this for the staff and all of the panelists and board members. We will have a recording of the meeting just shortly. Our next meeting is January 28, 2026. I believe it's scheduled from 2 to 5, and we will refine that timing as we get closer to that meeting. But that's what it's scheduled for. I look forward to seeing you all at that next meeting. And if we don't see you, have a Happy New Year. It's weird to say in November, but all right. Thank you all. With that, the meeting is adjourned.